Good evening. The August 9th, 2022 Board Meeting is now in order. I am happy to welcome my fellow board members and the public. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer. Mr. Gibbs, roll call please.
Ms. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougall.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the audience to join. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, for God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I don't know. It's me or friends.
All right. At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of our community who'd like to start us off.
Coco first.
Jenkins?
I'll be pretty quick. So, last board meeting, I had the pleasure of revealing that Coco High School was getting almost $80,000 of weight room equipment from Academy Sports. So shout out to Academy Sports one more time. But also, something pretty incredible happened after that. I had talked about how the community is going to come together at some point and kind of paint the weight room, make the space look fresh and new, and we were going to find a muralist and start a fundraiser in order to get that paid for. After the board meeting, an assistant coach from NFL team who wants to remain anonymous had reached out to me and said that they wanted to pay for the mural, which was incredible. But I hadn't gotten a quote nor a muralist. And before I even could, that amazing assistant coach from Coco High School, Mr. James Fullston, had already accomplished all of the things. He went out of his way, he found a muralist, he got a quote, he got the entire project fully funded. So I just want to give another shout out to Mr. Fullston for being the most incredible human being, not only working for this team for free, but for donating his time, his money, and his care and his love for these students. He's an incredible, incredible human being. So thank you again, Mr. Fullston, for coming through. And I just want to do a quick shout out to our new kindergarten parents. We are going to start kindergarten tomorrow, and I know that your kids are going to be happy and excited, but probably cry a lot, and there'll probably be some tears for you too. You're going to make it through. All of us starting first grade next year, so I know what it feels like for you guys. But I just want to shout out to those brand-new parents who are starting their experience with Brevard Public Schools. We're happy to have you. It's going to be a great year, it's going to be a great experience. Just hang in there, hold back those tears.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Campbell?
Yes, first of all, welcome to everyone. It's a very colorful meeting out in the crowd tonight, so glad you all are here to be a part of what we have going on. We had registration going on all over the place, starting as early as, you know, like, July the 26th, 27th-ish, and continuing on into this week. And one of the things that I noticed, two schools down in my area do, I thought was really helpful. One of them was like a ninth grade, they did today, you know, come on campus, take the tour, see your classes, because Registration Day, you know, you don't really have a lot of time to do all that. And then, I know Dr. Sullivan and her crew are working on our middle school transformation, right? But I think some of our schools are starting to get a head start. And I can't remember if I shared this with you guys or not, but Central Middle School did a new student activity day last Friday afternoon where it wasn't just go around and see the classes, they actually had games and fun activities for the afternoon for them to do. And so, you know, just drop off the kids and let them have a few hours getting to meet their, getting to know their new school and their new staff. And so, that was really great and engaging and a great way to kick off the middle school for those, you know, it's hard to send your kid to kindergarten, but I'm just telling you because I've already done it three times, it's even harder to drop them off for seventh grade. So many more drop-offs to go. Last week, we've talked about Brevard Virtual School and what an amazing things, all the amazing things they've done over the last two years, you know, we extended the deadline to apply to Brevard Virtual School two summers in a row, and that was really, really hard on them. And I shared with you guys before the surge, right, up to, I don't know, 5,000 at the peak and then. And so, I did take the opportunity last week, on the day that they were all together, and I presented our Impact Elevated Pen to everybody on staff because the principal, Ms. Price, just couldn't narrow it down to his future, that I'd have to give it to everybody. I said, "Let me talk to Tammy and see how many pens we have," and I presented it to all the staff who've been over the last two years. So that was a great day, very well received. And then, just final, just kind of a little announcement is that this Saturday, the Children's Hunger Project will be, has moved into their new facility there at the edge of Coco Village, and they're having their ribbon cutting and open house this Saturday. So invite the rest of the board, anybody in the community, you know the great work that the Children's Hunger Project does for our students who are experiencing, you know, weekend hunger, and they pack those meals and work in cooperation with our schools to meet those needs. So the ribbon cutting is this Saturday, and invite everybody to come out to Coco. And for the exact address, check out the Children's Hunger Project.org website. I believe it's 11 to 1.
Yeah.
11 to 1.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Susan?
Well, I could go or you could go. You want me to go? I've got a couple pages. You want me to go before you? Hey, I wanted to say, thank you for everybody that's here tonight, seeing you guys interact, whether each one of us has a separate issue. We're glad that you came in here tonight to be with us. The first thing I want to say is, is I sent an email as a follow-up to the 403Bs and 457 plans to try to get that information that I did. Many people don't know that we have over 22 providers, and the fees that are inside some of those retirement plans will, if they're too high, will actually inhibit a retirement for one to two to three years on the back end for the retirement. So I've requested all of those with the fees, should have something for you guys at the next board meeting, but we're moving forward with that. I got to say thank you to the ROTC programs at Vieira High School and others. They had me come over and Don Weaver, many of you guys don't know or do remember Don, he's the one that worked with me to create the largest veteran speaking project in the Southeast United States. He's still going. Like, I just said, "Hey, this is a great idea, let's go," and then Don's been doing it for six years. So he was speaking to the ROTCs about that, and an issue that we're going to discuss later on about, hey, if we have more kids that are interested in ROTC, let's try to figure out a way so that we can increase the amount of instructors and stuff like that. But I want to say thank you to them for giving me the opportunity to speak to them, listen to them about what they're having problems with so that we can address that as a board. Big deal, you guys, beach volleyball is now an official FHSAA sport, which means, not many people understand this, that the number-one teams in the state of Florida, comp teams, everything else, come from Brevard. So we might be able to, for the first time, host an FHSAA state championship for a program here in Brevard. The Tourism Development Council was excited, there's some other things going on, but it just literally became a sport. And we have the best athletes. Many people don't know, like UCLA's beach volleyball team is amazing, right? Yeah, we got a kid on there. The team that we had just recently, the comp went all the way. So huge opportunity, we're going to discuss later on for us. I wanted to give a big shout out to the ALCs. Dr. Mullins is actually working on, and Sue Han, about the basketball court in the back that Dr. Mullins promised me he'd do a one-on-one with me once it's completed. And, but many people don't know this, our ALCs were double the amount last year. They went through the toughest times as individuals, along with everybody else, but they had double the enrollment on their staff. And the discipline was out of control, and they were on the front lines. And that is an exceptional workforce, exceptional group, especially in the South Area ALC, and anything we can do to help them out, I know everybody here's been greatly appreciative of them. But anyways, the other thing is, is I worked on the mandates. Remember I said, the school, the good idea fairies up in Tallahassee sometimes come up with these great ideas that they're going to mandate this big volume of stuff and this big volume of requirements and this big volume of requirements? And you know what? They forget that every time they do that, that's less time for our kids to learn. So when they're inside of the classroom and the teacher has to stop and fill out 55 forms or all these requirements to go to do all these things, then that takes time away from the classroom. So we started identifying and I started making a phone call to a bunch of groups to come together and tell me, complain to me about what takes time out of your day. And then, let's go come together and come up with a anti, you know, hey, we can change some of these regulatory and requirements. So I sit on the Board of Directors, well, I sort of sit on the Board of Directors for the Florida School Board Association, and I'm going to make this my number-one request legislatively, is to reduce a lot of these mandates that we have inside of our classes. Hey, I don't know if you guys are checking, but literally our enrollments are exploding in some of our schools. Rockledge is up over 150 kids. Some of our, it's across the board, incredible what's happening. That's great, right? Our schools are showing the rebound. Kind of scary because we're already a teacher shortage, so that requires more teachers. So Dr. Mullins, great job, great direction, we're expanding. And after-school, many of you guys weren't here at the workshop, it was great stuff. They presented on after-school programs, and I got Dr. Mullins to agree to look at. AAU offering some sports inside of the elementary schools, because many of you know, after-school programs, those kids are crazy. They come out of school and they're like ADHD City, so if we give them an opportunity to compete against each other in intermurals run by an organization with their own insurance, we might be able to get it off. And then I wanted to say thank you to Suntree Elementary. My daughter is starting her first sixth-grade year, and Suntree United Methodist for both of there, and my son's starting there for kindergarten. And I'll tell you guys, the heart and soul of this district is inside of our teachers. And I am absolutely amazed at what our programs and our schools are doing. And Ms. Tressler's doing a great job because my baby girl gets to go to school and she gets to see and feel comfortable and be a part of a learning environment. And I wanted to say thank you. And then, we'll be addressing some of the misconceptions over the libraries and stuff like that a little bit later on. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
So, I only have a couple. First, I want to thank Dr. Mullins because he was a speaker at the, at Cocoa Beach Chamber of Commerce, and he did a great presentation on our schools, the safety in our schools. And it was in con, it was with the Sheriff's Department also. An amazing turnout, it was one of their largest turnouts, so thank you for being there. And I also just want to say thank you to all of our teachers, to our volunteers, to our substitutes, to our parents, and I wish everyone a great school year. I think it's going to be fabulous, so I just want to say thank you for everything that you do and look forward to a great year.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall, Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I'm going to go ahead and defer my time for the back-to-school presentation, I'll make some recognition.
Perfect. I have just a couple of quick ones then. Ms. Campbell, like you, I have been so excited to see, I have seen both middle school and high school have done like student team-building days where the students get to come in and do activities and start to build relationships with both their peers and the faculty and staff at the school, which I think is just phenomenal. And so, thanks to all of the teams that worked so hard to put those together for our students, parent feedback has been amazing on them, and I think it's just a great start to the school year, especially with students coming into a new school and not knowing people. And so, the other thing that I've noticed, which I really appreciate, is lots of our principals have been utilizing pre-planning to do team-building with their faculty and staff as well. And so, I think, you know, that too goes along with our whole push for cultural change at the schools and starting off our year strong. So, and you know, we can't forget either that so many people behind the scenes have worked so hard to make our schools ready for tomorrow, from our custodial services, our facilities folks, our, goodness, our HR folks that have been onboarding people like crazy, our district security staff who is having to do all the fingerprinting and background checks for all of the people that are coming on board. And so, it really has been a full team effort to make sure that we are ready to go for tomorrow, and I just want to thank everyone for that. Also want to share with you all, I don't know if you noticed in the BPS headlines, but I think it's appropriate to share a congratulations to our financial services staff who were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the School Board of Brevard County for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th. The report's been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So many congratulations to our financial team, and I know GCR had some input on the putting together of that document as well, so thank you to all of you for your efforts in that area. And with that, we will move into the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have one presentation, 18 consent items, two action items, and five board member reports or discussion points. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the addition of Items F-18, approved memorandum of agreements with International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, or Local 10-10, for the 2022-23 premium pay and recruitment and retention bonus. H-19, approved premium pay and recruitment retention bonuses for eligible non-bargaining personnel. K-31, athletic stipends. K-32, teacher shortage plan. K-33, classroom libraries and book fairs. K-34, ROTC additional instructor. And K-35, parental visitation during lunch. And a revision to Item H-30, department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the Board? Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell, is there any discussion? I will share just one quick comment that I think is important to note. I'm thrilled to see that we have the MOU on here for 10-10, for them to be getting those funds. I was out speaking with someone recently, and the perception was that because there was much media coverage over the teachers' salary negotiation for the coming year, the perception was we were not doing anything for 10-10. And so, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we are preparing for bargaining on our 10-10 contract. We haven't forgotten about all of those individuals. It was just a timing issue with getting together with the union to begin that bargaining, and so we don't want them to think that they have been forgotten by any means. It is coming. So if there's no additional discussion, I will call the question. Dr. Mullins, did you want to say something?
Well, Ms. Belford, I appreciate that recognition, that acknowledgement of the process with our other employee groups. I would echo the same with our non-bargaining employee groups. The only thing the Board is approving this evening is premium pay, which was negotiated very early with the Brevard Federation of Teachers, and we thought it most expeditious if we brought it as soon as possible. So to your point, we are continuing negotiations with 10-10 and anticipate bringing a contract to the Board for approval in the near future.
Super, thank you. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we are going to have a back-to-school update and safety and security presentation from Dr. Mullins.
All right, let me see if I can get this queued up. Well, I believe I recently suggested that my favorite day of the year is not Christmas Day, unlike many of our kids out there, but it is literally tomorrow morning as we wake up extra early and prepare for, conclude the preparations for, because we've been doing a lot of preparations over the last many weeks, to receive our 70-plus thousand kids across our nearly 100 places of learning in our great community, Brevard County. So I wanted to provide the Board and our community just an update of where we are and where things are and what our plans and preparations are as we prepare for the days ahead. So I'd like to begin with talking about staffing. I presented to the Board and Dr. Thede did as well, over the last couple of board meetings, where we are with teacher and staff vacancies. I wish I could tell you that we have overcome the challenge, but we continue to work through that challenge like our other districts across the state and truthfully across the country. I'm encouraged and pleased that we've made progress, made improvements, since we've reported to the Board over the last few weeks. We do, we do at this time have 143 classroom vacancies remaining. That is up from 93 classrooms this time last year. But we also have some support staff vacancies as well, and I've provided a breakdown by both elementary and secondary. And what I want to emphasize, in the midst of the perceived uncertainty of those classrooms, we faced as difficult, and I would even suggest more difficult circumstances a year ago, where we had triple-digit vacancies, yet also the uncertainties of quarantines and staff going out for illness and so on. So at this time, we are, we are putting contingencies in place to be prepared, of course, for our first day tomorrow with our students. We have accelerated our substitute program, we've reached out to them, we have, if the Board remembers, over the last couple of years, we've had very inconsistent substitute availability throughout the school year. The substitute fill rate right now is up over 83%, which is better than anything we experienced over the last two and a half years and isn't that much worse than what we had during pre-pandemic time. And we've also prioritized substitutes for schools that we know are going to have some immediate needs as we work through some additional hiring process. But in addition to that, our district instructional staff will provide supports to schools. Both our leading and learning staff are being deployed to schools, as well as our student services staff are deployed to schools, supporting them during some of this transition of filling those classrooms. And I'll emphasize again later, but we go through a process of some adjustments and right-sizing our classrooms and so on, which is really fine-tuned during our six-day count process. I'll mention that again in just a moment. But in addition to this, our student services teams are supporting our new, our new Gardendale Education Center for our students for the first time, and just want to give a huge shout out to not only student services who have turned around a, starting up a school in literally a matter of a few weeks, but also to the entire team of Brevard Public Schools, as my entire senior cabinet have rallied around student services through this endeavor to provide capital support, staffing support, services, and so on. And everyone came to the ready to help our team get that school ready, and it's going to be a great first day for our kids at Gardendale. In addition, ESE has the, Student Services has the opportunity to contract out some of our ESE services for our schools as well. In addition, I want to reassure and assure our community, every one of our parents, our principals are very aware, as we are, of exactly where our needs and potential gaps are, and we have a plan to receive our kids tomorrow and to give them a positive and quality first day of school tomorrow across every one of our campuses. Then as we move forward, we will begin looking at how might we utilize Brevard Virtual School through some extended-day assignments to support our secondary classrooms, as well as look at extended-day assignments within our schools for teachers who are interested in, for another year, a double-stipend opportunity to take on an additional course in their school. So that, that's, those are transitions that happen every year, that's normal, and we anticipate maximizing those options again this year. In addition, we'll be, as enrollment realizes, and what I mean by that is, is sometimes we aren't completely perfect at the projections of where we have our students and what grade levels and even in what classes across our secondary schools, and we've got to do some collapsing, we've got to do some consolidating and so on, and we anticipate that that will ease some of our vacancies that exist right now. As well as we're continuing to walk out the search for potential international teachers, we're in conversation right now with an organization that would suggest they have teachers in Canada who want to transfer and, who are certified teachers and could help meet some of our needs as well. But because of visas and those type of things, it's a complicated process, so we're working through it as expeditiously as possible. But again, our six-day count process, I know the Board is very familiar with that, our schools are certainly, a little bit of an education ease term for our community. And what that means is, after the sixth day of school, we shore up our numbers. We take counts on the first, second, and sixth day of school, and we use those to begin setting our allocation adjustments into the first semester of the school year. We literally meet with every principal at every school, with staff across the district to right-size our allocations over three very rigorous days called our six-day count meetings. And that, that is where we begin to optimize staff across the district, and that'll be the process we have in place again this year. Before I move on to some of our operational updates, I also want to use this opportunity to reiterate to our community that all of our schools are open to in-person learning and activities are restored completely. There are no restrictions to activities as we go into this year. We phased out of restrictions last year, and those remain in place. I will share with the Board at this time that there is only one exception, and temporarily, and that is lunch visits on campus. As the Board knows, we have our first priority to receiving our students, establishing our security measures and processes, some of which I'm going to highlight in the security portion, and given the demand on our, our, our school staff right now, particularly with some additional shortages, we need to give the time to our principals to make sure that we've met our security supervisory responsibilities, as well as give them the opportunity to make the classroom adjustments that are required right now, as well as getting students settled into class. And to Mr. Susan's point, I would echo that our enrollment is looking very favorable this year. We have new families enrolling in our schools every day and anticipate that as folks come in from particularly out of state, northeast, where the school year starts later, we are expecting a considerable number of families even coming into our schools in these coming days wanting to register their students. Where starting school at the beginning of August is unfamiliar to them, given that they often start, don't start school until after Memorial Day. But I will be coming back to the Board here in the next couple few weeks and revisiting the lunch visits of parents on our campuses. Next, I want to give an update on food service. We've made some mentions of our free breakfast and lunch programs for our students over the last two years as part of the federal school lunch initiative to support all of our schools. That program has ended, but we have positioned ourselves to expand our community eligibility provision program, and we'll be able to continue to provide free breakfast and lunch to now 46 sites across Brevard schools. What many folks aren't aware of is Brevard Public Schools' free and reduced lunch rate has continued to increase over the last several years, and our latest report of students who qualify for free reduced lunch increased from 51 to 57%. So we have been able to accordingly expand our CEP program. But our students will continue to receive free breakfast across all of our schools, and you can see the robust investments that we've made into our cafeterias and our food service programs across the district and many of our schools across the district. Transportation, very excited as we launch the reality of Brevard Public Schools buses, every one of them is going to be equipped with GPS. Now, those of us who drive a vehicle or carry a cell phone find it surprising that we don't have GPS on our buses yet? No, we hadn't until this year. And by, through the support of our sales Surtax initiative, we've been able to now equip our buses with this, this resource. And it comes with a tool called Rexium that is also installed on every bus, and it gives us real-time information on where our buses are, the, any troubles that they may be experiencing with delays or adjustments to a route, so we can ultimately make real-time adjustments in the district office, inform our schools. inform our schools, but also give notifications to parents of exactly what's going on with the routes that their children are on. So we have provided that information to our parents through registration over the last several weeks. We had transportation representatives at every one of our elementary established registration days, and they were there, able to assist parents in understanding how they'd be able to utilize this tool moving forward on their smartphone. Some of the, the tools that are going to be, or feedback that we'll be able to glean from this new instrument, or this new program, is identifying discrepancies between what we planned for and then what reality is, particularly for our kids on their buses. We'll actually be able to real-time know what is our pickup and drop-off times? Are they consistent? Are we meeting our goal of having every student on campus with time to go get breakfast when they arrive on campus? So we have real-time reporting of our arrivals. But then also, our parents can monitor where their student is on the bus, as they can receive a notification of when their student gets on the bus and when they get off the bus. It'll even notify us when a student happens to get on the wrong bus and prevent that student from departing from the school campus to get a few miles down the, the road and realize, uh-oh, I've gotten on the wrong bus. And we'll be able to notify families or parents when that occurs as well. So now moving on to capital projects that we have had going on across our district all summer. It has been a very, very busy summer for our capital projects team across our campuses. You'll see, as a result of our sales Surtax initiative, we have been able to expand or complete electrical renewal, intercom renewals, canopy renewals, track renewals. Mr. Susan already referenced that. As well as we've upgraded water fountains across our schools with now bottle fillers, as we've learned that that is essential coming out of the pandemic. But also the pool lighting initiative that we've discussed at previous board meetings and workshops, as well as several security projects across the district. But not only were infrastructure items enhanced and improved across our schools, but also the insides of our classrooms. As we replaced furniture across different elementary schools, we upgraded science labs. I, 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 I shared last, with the League of Cities last night, and I met Steve, who was a graduate of Cocoa High School in 1974. And I was sharing this slide, and I said, Steve, you'll be pleased to know that the science labs have been upgraded at Cocoa High. So we, we, we had a little bit of a chuckle about that because he is a proud alumni from 1974. But also, we've been able to replace carpet that has more than lived its life across our schools and district. It's, it's amazing to see, as, as a former principal who had the benefit of welcoming my students back to a new school year with a new fresh of paint on the school, the students walk in with beaming smiles and pride to see how bright and new their school looks with a, a fresh coat of paint. So very pleased we were able to provide that, those paintings services to several of our schools this summer, and that'll continue again next summer. But then also some LED lighting projects that not only enhance the environment for our students, creating the most positive learning environment for them, but also enhancing safety and security across our campuses. As some of our schools have events going on in the evening, after dark, as well as saving energy by converting to LED products for lighting. Other facility projects that occurred across our district, you can see HVAC at several schools, a, a significant renovation at the Garden Education, Gardendale Education Center to support our new day school, restrooms, outdoor court renewal, JROTC ranging, the firefighter academy at Palm Bay High School, and others received significant improvements. And that's above and beyond the many food nutrition service improvements that I already referenced. In addition to capital facilities, our educational technology team has been very busy improving the expansion of our network, our, our, what will soon be our own fiber system for, for resiliency, as well as dependability across the district, prepping our classrooms for the modern classroom technology that we'll be able to provide them and support of our one-to-one initiative moving forward with our high schools and elementary schools next. As well as a formal full launch of Focus. It is an amazing tool. Parents have been introduced to it over the last year or two. We are making that platform fully available and accessible to our parents and really want to do, and encourage our families to become familiar with all of the resources that Focus has to provide, from keeping track of classroom assignments to communicating with teachers, as well as school staff. So real quick, pictures are worth a thousand words. Mr. Susan probably would say, I've already used a thousand words, but I'll give you the pictures as well. Here are some before and after, the painting that we did at Suntree Elementary School. You can see the media center at West Melbourne School for Science. A real wonderful upgrade and enhancement there. Here's a picture of some of our classrooms before on the left, and the new furniture and positive learning environment we're able to establish after, as well as improving bathrooms at our Cocina Elementary School.
We didn't have kids using that restroom. We did not have people in there using, like, that wasn't before.
That's Dorian, that's Dorian.
All right? My Dr. Williams, I mean.
All right, all right, all right. You got me on that one. You're right, we didn't, that was for the faculty. No, but our kids, our faculty did not experience the bathroom on the left. But that's what it looked like before it got, gets to look like what is on the right. All right. Now I want to kind of transition into, you know, a topic that is certainly serious, but one that I am extraordinarily proud to discuss. Having had the opportunity and privilege to work as chief operating officer before becoming superintendent at that very life-changing time of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. But what I am proud of is, is the commitment, the priority that our district has made to the safety and security of our students long before tragedies began happening very close to home. And that has continued. I know parents, because they've reached out to me even this summer, are concerned about the realities that have happened to our education family not far away. And how are we working to ensure we'll do everything we can in our, our power to keep our kids safe? And I want to provide that assurance that I know this board, I know this superintendent, I know our law enforcement agencies, who are, all of them are partners with Brevard Public Schools, are 100% committed to the safety of our students and our staff every day across our campuses. So just quickly, here is a, a snapshot of the schools that we are responsible for serving across the district. And all of these sites will have, even in the midst of staff shortages, they will have an armed presence in every one of our schools whose sole responsibility is to protect our kids and protect our staff. Who are those law enforcement agencies and individuals? Well, the, the, the board knows, Brevard County Sheriff's Office is our contracted security provider for our schools. We're very fortunate to have a robust security office with several Brevard County Sheriff's Office employees who work hand-in-hand, day in, day out, with our own staff through our operations department, with our chief operating officer, to ensure we're meeting our students, we're meeting the needs of our kids and our schools. But you can see that we have 34 county deputies. We have 34 other law enforcement school resource officers, as well as we maintain 34 of our own security specialists across our schools. So you can see, we more than exceed the staffing that we need to have an armed, at, at least one armed presence at every one of our schools. So I want to highlight our district office manned by Brevard County Sheriff's Office, Major Brian Neal. He is a familiar face even to this room, Lieutenant Joanna Siegel. But also the other staff that we have in that office that include analysts, whose primary responsibility is to search social media and internet and so on, and monitor any threats that could be shared out there so we have a jump on what may be confronting our schools. And they work literally 24/7 to support our, our school administrative teams, as well as our law enforcement representatives across our schools. But not only do we have an amazing partnership with Brevard County Sheriff's Office, but that extends across our 10 municipalities and the police departments that also provide armed officers in our schools. And these just aren't men and women who put on a uniform and wear, wear weapons to protect our campuses. These are men and women who have personally invested in the lives of the people inside that building. And it is not uncommon. I give a shout out to our SRO at Ocean Breeze Elementary School, who has a phenomenal rapport, relationship, partnership with the kids, with the staff. And that was recognized as she was our district employee of the year, and then went on to be recognized as the state employee of the year. But she's not an exception. Our SROs are invested in our schools. Our school safety specialists are engaged at every level in our schools. And they're not just another staff member, they're a part of the family. And they work hand-in-hand with our school administrators to ensure that we're all coming together to share the safety and security of that environment. And so I highlight again the different police departments across our district that we partner with and meet with regularly to ensure that communication remains open and robust. I want to highlight the training that occurs every year for our law enforcement partners, but also for our school staff. This summer, we had the opportunity for several of our administrators to participate in an active shooter exercise provided by Health First. It was hosted by the, the sheriff's office. And our administrators were able to engage in this mock experience and do post-action debriefing and learn from that experience and take actions back to their own schools to improve the environments that they are responsible for. We also require monthly incident and fire drills, but it's not just a practice of doing a drill. After every drill, our administrative teams come together with the law enforcement representatives, and they debrief and do an after-action report that has to be submitted to the district indicating where they will make some adjustments and/or improvements to the process to be better, increasingly prepared. And when we don't receive those after-action reports, our chief operating officer knocks on the door of the principal and says, "Let's have a conversation," so that we keep everybody current and up to date on that, on that process. But in addition, our security specialists continue to have to meet annual recertification requirements. I know, Miss Belford, you're familiar with that as well, as you personally participated in the security specialist training. But that, the training far exceeds the state requirement of about 139, 40 hours. Our program conducted or, or provided by the sheriff's office is 176 hours to ensure that our men and women are above and beyond prepared. In addition, our SROs have annual training that they must complete to continue to serve as a school resource officer. An initiative I'm very proud of, as, as we launched this years before it was required by the state, and I would share with the board and our community, this process has been recognized by the state as an exemplar for districts across the state. It is our own in-house developed school emergency operations plan, or what we call to, what we refer to as the COP. It is personalized and developed at every school. It is comprehensive and identifying everything from evacuation plans to items that need to go with staff and students when they evacuate, where they evacuate, to whose role and responsibility it is for several different functions throughout any type of incident, and so on. It is reviewed annually with our law enforcement partners, and it includes the drills and the after-action reports that are required as well. Again, they are not available to the public. They are protected as part of our security plan, but I want to provide the reassurance to our community that our administrative teams dig into this personally and comprehensively to ensure that they have done everything they need to, to be prepared in case of any incident. And as I wrap up, and I'll, I'll certainly be available for questions to the, from the board, we continue to enhance the hardening of our campuses across the district this summer through our sales Surtax dollars, upgrading our intercom systems, which are obviously essential for communication, hardening our front offices, which, as we have now created a single point of access to our campuses, that front office indicated a considerable vulnerability, and we have addressed that as well, as, as well as providing GPS and continuing to establish hard corners in our classrooms. I had the opportunity to share this conversation with the Cocoa Beach Chamber that Ms. McDougal referenced last week, along with Sheriff Wayne Ivey. And I don't think I would be speaking out of place if I reiterated some of the things that he emphasized in that conversation. And that's because I have seen it firsthand myself. Number one, the communication that exists between every law enforcement agency. And as we've looked at tragedies that have occurred in other places, a lot of things went wrong. Not the least of which was communication, even across agency. And I am pleased to say that that is not a, a problem that we'll have to experience here in Brevard, because the communication and the comm center at the county will be able to patch us together. But also, there's been question or wondering, are our officers trained and prepared to act when a threat is presented? And I can confidently tell you, I've heard it myself, and I've seen it in the, in the officers who serve our schools. They know their responsibility. They are committed to their responsibility, and there is no question. They are empowered, as well as prepared, to act and put themselves between danger and our kids and our staff. And that's a sobering thought, but it's also a reassuring thought. And I commend the partnership we have with our law enforcement agencies across Brevard County and with Brevard Public Schools. Before I open it up, I've got to bring us back around to what tomorrow, the magic that'll happen tomorrow. Yes, we will open the front doors and the gates of buildings and campuses. But that will be eclipsed by the thousands and thousands of men and women across this organization who will open the gates to their hearts to welcome our students with love, acceptance, and strive to inspire them to reach goals and dreams that in many cases, they would have never thought of themselves. So I'll leave you with this short video that captures best why I think, and I think you'll agree, education matters. Education is the equalizer for kids. Kids, students come from all kinds of backgrounds, but when kids walk into the doors of our schools, we can provide them a new gateway to all of the opportunities that are before them and provide them inspiration to pursue a dream they may not have otherwise thought was possible for them.
Education matters because it is the foundation for our society. Our young people grow up, they learn the lessons that they need to be productive citizens after high school.
My favorite part of being an educator is working with the children. The best part of this job, 100%, hands down, no matter how bad my day is, I can go in there and I can see their smiling faces. Someone's got to put one on mine.
To be an educator to me just means I have a say-so on my legacy. And I think that's important because I would like to think at the end of my life, it would be nice to know that I had a hand in something that affected everyone around me.
The kids and the environment is what makes me happy about coming.
The kids and the environment is what makes me happy about coming to work every single day. To be able to have that opportunity to help them choose the right path and maybe make a difference in their life is what it's about.
Having the support of fellow teachers and educators in Brevard Public Schools means a lot. Without educators, we would not be a community.
I just think back over my 20-plus-year career, how there have been so many people along the way who have inspired me because they were doing great things with their students. I thought, man, I can do great things with my students as well.
I've been blessed to have several different people pouring into me that I've been able to pull information from and just be able to observe and watch, and it's been a game-changer for me.
My hope and commitment and drive for our employees is that you realize there's only one you, we need your best for our kids, and we can only be our best with you.
Your impact knows no bounds. You know, when you drop the stone in the pond, the ripples go out forever, and that's what a teacher does every single day for a student. The interactions that you have, those ripples, you just don't know how far they reach.
Getting involved with Brevard Public Schools just was icing on the cake, because now I get to not only enjoy where I live, but I get to help make it a better place.
I am enormously proud of the commitment and the work that our entire school system has provided our kids and our community during this time.
Well, with that, I reassure our board and I reassure our community, we are excited, we are ready. Let's get started.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and the entire team for all of the work for that. Any board members have any questions or comments for Dr. Mullins on the presentation?
Very important question. Did we burn those carpets that we ripped out?
They have been hauled far, far away.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And I mean, not to take away from the seriousness of the latter part of that presentation, but there's just been, there's been so much work over this summer and over the past year to get ready and get started for this new school year. So thank you to everyone on our team that participated in it, and thank you to you, Dr. Mullins, and thank you for that video.
You know, I do have answered several questions over the summer from people who've asked, especially after what happened out in Texas, and you know, as more and more came out, the reports have come out, you know, I felt more confident in what we have done than ever because I, some of the things that went wrong, as you alluded to, I feel like we have that already handled here. And not to say that something tragic couldn't happen, but I'm very thankful for the partnerships that we have and for the work that we've already been able to do, and for our staff and our SROs and for our security specialists who are committed. I have to thank you about, you know, I know there's been a little, every time we have something new, it's changed, right? There's going to be a little resistance, and there's, I've seen a little bit of resistance regarding the new bus program with the Reaxium program. But I have to tell you, as someone, you know, every day, we get an incident report, and it goes to district-level staff and to the board, and it tells everything, you know, a kid at Discovery Elementary fell and hit their head on the playground, or someone had a seizure, or, you know, a bus ran into a fence, you know, things like that. But included in those incident reports every week, there's some child that the parents called and said, "My child didn't get off the bus, where are they?" And sometimes it's because they did actually get off the bus, and they went to Johnny's house next door and didn't call anybody, and then they find him later, and everybody's searching around. But I can see how this is really going to eliminate so much of that confusion and panic, you know, right, stricken in parents' hearts, because they're going to know, you know, they're going to have, if they're at work, they know the child got off the bus, and they should know where to look. And so I think this is going to be a great thing. I look forward to the implementation of that. I look forward to those incidents not being on the email report every day. That'd be fantastic. I just had a quick question. When we, when we had our, you know, we had found out that we were, the separate-day schools, the special-day schools were, you know, that wasn't going to happen, that we had to have Gardendale up and running in such a very short time, did we get some of the staff from our previous special-day schools? Did we able, were we able to hire some of those?
We did. We were able to hire some of them. I can't remember exactly what the number is, but we hired several of them to serve in our school now at Gardendale. Some of them chose to pursue other paths, as well as went to other school opportunities, including some of our other schools. But several of them did end up serving, continuing to serve our students at Gardendale.
Good. Well, and I just have to say kudos on that, too, because that was a Herculean effort. And I know you said it already, but that's, that's not just setting up any school. It's very intense. It requires a lot of specialized staffing and facilities, and so good job on that as well. Thank you.
I would highlight a comment Ms. Moore said. She said, "It has shocked me, the little things we never suspected would be the big barriers and what we thought were going to be the big challenges that were never even an issue." And it really came down to the big things that we thought were going to be an issue, we controlled in, within the organization, and the team rallied and said, "That's not a problem, we got that." It was the little things like getting the school an ID number. Who would have thunk? But literally got a call from the Chancellor of Education. He said, "Help me understand, what are you doing? What are you trying to do?" And so I explained our situation. He says, "Oh, okay, I got it. Let me see what I can make happen." So appreciate their work, but it took a call from the Chancellor to the superintendent to get our new school a school ID number. So interesting.
I just, I would just put this challenge out to my fellow board members. I know that some of us overlook, yeah, I know, here we go. We haven't had a challenge in a while. We haven't had a challenge in a while, Mr. Susan. But this is a serious one that I think we can meet, especially since, actually, all five of us, three of us in the, at the public schools, you know, as teachers, but you know, you've taught college kids, you can teach kindergarten. And Ms. McDougal, we've all subbed over the last couple of years. When there was needed, you know, high absentee days, I have already talked to Dr. Thetty and volunteered my services, gave me a couple of weeks first. But as we have opportunity, and it's all hands on deck, I know it sounds like we're doing great actually in the sub area, and I'm super excited about the new software that we're using, but I want to challenge my fellow board members to jump in there and offer your services maybe one day a week or once a month or something like that, because I think that, you know, helps when leadership sets an example, being willing to jump in and serve, and know you don't have to do kindergarten. I don't really like to do kindergarten myself, but give me a middle school class.
Will you forget, Ms. Campbell, I also work with the little ones in the pool, so I might be well-suited for kindergarten. You never know, right? Anybody else have, Mr. Susan?
Vice Chair.
So, Dr. Mullins, I've seen part of this presentation before, and thank you again. It's very well put together, and I'm very excited. For our whole staff, and again, opening Gardendale was an amazing feat. So kudos to everyone who was involved, because it wasn't just one department, it was our whole, everybody working together and making it happen, as you said. So thank you very much for this presentation, I appreciate it. But I do have a question about the COP. That COP, isn't that, don't we have to report that to the state? Don't they sign off on our plan?
Yes, they do, but you may also be thinking of the FSAT. That's the annual survey that we do. Every one of our schools completes approximately a 400-question survey related to safety and security of their specific campus. We then break it down, go through every response, we aggregate the responses, look for any commonalities and respond. And then here in the next several, I know Mr. Wilson is working on that right now, then we'll present that to the board here in the coming weeks. That then also has to be reported to the state, so yes.
Is there a timeline on that?
The FSAT response, I believe, has to be to the state by October 15th. It is, I don't think Mr. Wilson is in here right now. I believe the responses from the schools, the completion was due August 1st, I believe, and now we go through the disaggregating and then aggregating data to see if there are any district responses we need to make.
And I just want to remind everybody, it's 400 questions?
Yes, it is.
So it does take a lot of time, and I'm glad that we-
It's very comprehensive.
It is comprehensive, and I appreciate our staff following through, and I believe we work with our sheriff's department to complete that together.
Yes, Mr. Wilson works with Major Brian Neal and his team to look at the results as well, make sure there isn't a response that we need to put in place that is law enforcement-oriented.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Mullins, thank you. When you were talking about the child's getting on the buses, we always get those, and that's really a part of it, but one of the things not many people understand is that our bus drivers during COVID had to literally submit paper every single day about who was on their bus, and it was one of the most ridiculous things that we had to do as COVID. It's not our fault at all, but, but to put our people through that, this gets rid of that. Anytime we ever have an issue in the future, children will be able to show their badge, scan it, and get on. The other thing that this does is that for security, and I'm not sure if we've implemented this yet, but I know that you can use them also for hall passes and everything else. So as a teacher, when your student says, "Hey, I'm going to go out and use the hall pass," you now have a registration of when they left, when they came back, you know, if they're still out, if there's an instance that comes out, they've registered that they're out, the central base will know which is out there. Phenomenal program, Dr. Mullins, and hats off to you. That's just one of the most amazing things to do. I love your idea. I've always subbed every year. Once a week, a little too much for me, right? But I do like that, and I think it's a culture that we should do. One of the things you do, even though I taught for nine years in the district, and I loved doing it, and I had great engagement, man, when I went back into the classroom, I realized that I couldn't make it now. To be honest with you, it takes a lot to get moving. There's so many regulations, but the kids, there's just so much energy that takes behind it. And for us to realize what the teachers are going through, I also would say, Deskovich used to do it, ride with the bus drivers every once in a while, see the stuff that, like, the kids acting inappropriate, you can see some of that, or the kids that are good, see the pass. I think that there's some of those that we really can do, and I think we do do that for the most part. So challenge accepted, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, for all of that information and to all of our team. Just a couple of things, a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. If I recall correctly, from days way back when you were COO and I would get calls from you about our transportation issues, as Ms. Campbell mentioned, you know, the heart feeling of the parents, but I can tell you, and you know from our conversations, as the board member who's getting the call that, hey, we have a child that got off the bus and we have not yet located them. One of the requirements that we had, especially for our youngest, our kindergartners, was that the adult that picked them up from the bus have a photo ID. Does the incorporation of the new technology eliminate that requirement? Do you know?
I don't believe so, no. We still require the parental ID when they pick up their child at the bus stop.
Okay, perfect. And then for my, for my fellow board members who were here for the workshop this morning, and also for our audience who probably didn't get a chance to see it, you know, there were, we had four staff members that presented about the work that they had done, and every one of those staff members was presenting about a teeny little nugget of their job, right? Because they all wear so many hats. And I just want to recognize that those same individuals who have worked their behinds off to get Gardendale open, who have worked on making sure that our Head Start is doing phenomenally well, who have, who have worked so hard on ensuring that our students are actually getting to school and addressing our attendance issue, are also the same people that are being deployed out to our schools this week to make sure that we have coverage in the schools. And so, you know, when Dr. Mullins says it is a full-team effort, I just could not be more proud of the way that the team has come around and, and supported the opening of Gardendale, and, you know, all of these things that fires come up and they just, they just jump in and take care of them. And so thank you for your leadership and to our, you know, our other district leadership for all the work that they do to make sure that we really are functioning as a team. And then the last thing that I'll, I guess, reference, Dr. Mullins, and you mentioned it when you were speaking, I too have had a lot of parents reach out to me with concerns about our safety response. And as you mentioned, I went through the active assailant training. I can tell you, I have trained not only with our BCSO staff that prepares our specialists to go out to the schools, but I've also trained independently with some of our municipalities that have gone and trained in our schools. And I just want to assure our parents that there is not a scenario where our local law enforcement is trained to stand back and not immediately address the threat in our schools. Every single aspect of the training is about immediately addressing that threat. And so, you know, as we see more and more of what's coming out, I think we just, we just need to not let our guard down, but know that that is not the way that we would operate here in Brevard Public Schools with the Sheriff's Department or with any of our municipalities being represented. So just, just a little encouragement there.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Dr. Mullins before we move on? Thank you so much, Dr. Mullins, for that update. We appreciate it. All right, we are now at the public comment portion of the meeting on, specifically on agenda items. We actually have three speakers signed up for agenda items. Ms. Skipper, the item that you had signed up for is not actually an agenda item, because it's not something that we're taking action on tonight. So I will move you to the, to the top of the non-agenda, okay? And Mr. Kaluchi, you also had mention of the K-33 on yours. So just giving you guys a heads up before you get here, you had the other one on yours as well. So we have Catherine Delaney and Anthony Kaluchi on agenda items. If you guys want to make your way, and I will read the things that I need to read. We have only two speakers, so each speaker will receive three minutes. Please note that the time is per speaker, not per agenda item. Topics not specific to agenda items will be moved to the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected, and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, terminate, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up. It's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or relevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. For the audience, please remember that outside of your personal public comment period, your role is as an observer. Therefore, I would ask that you would please not disrupt the meeting by interjecting comments or noises during public comments. All right. Ms. Delaney, give me one second here, just to make sure I'm set. Whenever you are ready, ma'am.
Thank you. I am wanting to speak on the superintendent evaluation. I have had a very different experience than what has been presented here today and, you know, at the, at the evaluation. I've been met with completely unprofessional behavior to parents, to taxpayers, to the general public. And after I left the meeting last school board meeting, Chairwoman Belford, you went on to say it was a misunderstanding why one of the board members was left out of the final evaluation. That's fine, but what about the requirement, required notification to the public that you did not do? You changed and proceeded with the meeting without public notification. That breaks sunshine law. I would like the public and the teachers to be aware that Dr. Mullins received an $8,000 bonus and a raise with this evaluation. While our teachers got a 4% raise, which is really a decrease in pay because of the 9% to 11% inflation thanks to the failures of the current administration, why would the superintendent receive a raise and an $8,000 bonus when our school grade went down for the county? When our discipline is out of control in our schools, when our teachers are getting assaulted in their classrooms by children, that's not leadership, and we need new leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney.
Chair Belford, I believe both these items are related to F-13. My name is Anthony Kaluchi. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a walking contradiction, the behavior of this school district. I point you to the F-13 under supplemental positions. Unless this board acts now, you are about to blatantly disregard the decision of an arbitrator who stated, and I quote, "If and only if the posting results in no qualified teacher volunteering for the coaching position, the school board may then award the position to a non-teacher volunteer." The arbitration decision was respected by VPS for five years, and then suddenly we have a qualified teacher with exemplary experience apply for a boys varsity basketball position, and you're about to support a direct violation of the arbitration decision by hiring a non-teacher volunteer. I'm asking that this item is pulled for discussion, and this board stop this injustice. Arbitrating this language, which you've never tried to change at the bargaining table, is not a fight you should be having. is not a fight you should be having. Now, on the other hand, this board should be fighting HB 1467, but instead is willing to act in an overcautious manner before the state even puts out guidance about the law. Other districts are not responding to the law in this way. They are trusting their teachers and administrators to use their professional judgment, whereas Brevard is ripping resources out of students' hands. You're forbidding teachers from using supplemental curriculum, you're preventing book fairs from happening, you're overloading our already overloaded media specialists with tasks you're not sure are required yet. And don't let staff tell you that it's not happening. I've seen the memos with my own two eyes. I spent nearly two decades as a classroom teacher, and without a doubt, preventing students from using supplemental materials will create them, will cause them to become bored and disengaged. Your approach is going to hurt students. Preventing teachers from using their professional judgment to choose supplemental materials will cause them to leave. I remind this board, your job is to insulate our teachers from harm. In this case, you're not insulating, you're intensifying the damage. And if you think I'm exaggerating, let me read from a teacher who resigned yesterday over 1467. "My entire classroom theme was Harry Potter. I planned on incorporating many aspects of this novel to teach a multitude of standards. When I asked her media specialist if it was vetted, she found out it was only for grades five and up. That's when I left and began breaking down my classroom. Please know it wasn't just Harry Potter, it was a principle in point, knowing that I cannot expect my students to instill a love of reading. So many books are under scrutiny. I feel my moral compass is too high. I can't look at my parents and students and tell them everything is fine when it is not." And board, I can't look at you and tell you everything is fine.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. We appreciate you joining us this evening. All right, that is going to then move us into the consent agenda. For those of you not familiar with the process, if you signed up to speak to non-agenda items, you will be called at the end of the meeting, okay? We're not skipping over you. Dr. Mullins, consent agenda.
Yes, there are 18 agenda items under the consent agenda.
Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I sent you a little card, F-13.
Yeah, I just needed you to say it.
Yes, I wish to pull F-13.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item F-13.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDowell, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Gibbs, that will move us to item F-13, correct? All right, so I will entertain a motion on F-13.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Floor is here, Mr. Susan.
Thank you. Currently, we have a situation where there's been an active grievance going on, and there's been past arbitrators who have arbitration that has actually found against. And the reason that I know this is, is because as a coach, there's many times when you come to a situation where you have two people who are up, and it's always a community coach, and you have a staff person, right, a teacher. And what ends up happening is, is they are very qualified between the two. And it's been an argument that I've had to wrestle back and forth. When this came up as an issue a couple, like a month ago when we were talking about this, my thought process was let it move through the arbitration, let it go ahead and move through, and then once it comes out, let Paul and the district staff do that, and then we make a decision based on the second half of that. What came is, is that just recently, like literally as we're coming in, to find out that this individual in the middle of a grievance is put onto the agenda to be accepted and receive the supplement move forward, it made me pull it and just say, hey, we got to stop for a second. So I just had a couple of questions to run through, just to make sure that I'm on the right portion here, and I wanted to hear if there's anything that I'm missing. But Paul, is there an active grievance currently over this item?
Yes, to my awareness, they grieved the selection, so it's going to arbitration.
And is there past arbitration on this item that has been found for or against us?
On this specific, this employee has not.
Not this employee, but on this topic, this issue.
The issue has gone, I want to say, at least twice that I'm aware of.
And in both cases, has the district prevailed or lost those items?
The last one was the one referenced by Mr. Calucci. We lost, I don't recall. Oh, eight, I want to say, it may have been a loss.
We were on the board when this happened, and I'll be honest with you, setting aside whether the community coach or the teacher's better, is not what I make the judgment here. That's not it at all. Where I fall on is the process of us putting an individual on the agenda to pass them in the middle of an arbitration, and that's where I have an issue. So, thank you for that, Paul. Is there a reason that I'm missing that we want to appoint this individual now? I didn't know. Is there a reason for that? Like, I see it on here, and maybe I'm missing something, maybe there's something going on.
Can't speak to why they're moving forward, other than the obvious that they want to get the program running.
Okay. Dr. Mullins, is there a reason we're doing this now, not as opposed to like a month from now or anything?
Well, I would have to ask Dr. Thedy to come up. She's closest, working most closely with the situation. I provide one clarification to your question to Mr. Gibbs, and that is it has been arbitrated in the past, but not all the procedural circumstances are the same.
Fine, it's close enough. Dr. Thedy, thank you for coming. Why would we move to put the individual in the middle of a grievance for move forward with this?
Because we're in the approval process for those sports for that season.
Is it consistent that in August, we usually do the approval process for all of the sports for this, for basketball and those winter sports?
We take the supplemented sports for the fall when they come in from the schools.
So what I did was, I thought about that. I said, you know, when we do the approval process for the supplements, usually we never really did them during sports until halfway through the year, because we didn't know if the coach would actually work out. So you'd have football, you'd have three or four coaches that work below you, and what you end up finding is, is that they may not make it throughout the process. So I said, well, let me look at past preference on when we actually did approve supplements for them. So I went back to August of 2018, I went to August of 2019, I went to August of 2021, and I'll hand these to you. We have never approved a basketball or a sport, actually, no sport at all supplement, between July and now for any of these. So basketball has never been approved in July or August. So this goes against not only the arbitration, but past precedence of when we actually do it. So, oh, here's August 27th, 2019. So when do we do it? So instantly, if you look through those, you'll find that there's absolutely no supplements related to basketball, and actually, in most of them, no supplements related to any sport. So for basketball, what you end up finding is, is that in November, December, and January, you start to see them come in. So generally, you'll see a coach who's been playing for a while, they end up coming in. So here's, for instance, November of 2019, you'll see that you have head soccer, basketball from middle school, head football, they all start kind of rolling in. So in this case, where we always are usually doing that is in November, not July, not August, mostly not September. That's November of 2019. This is November of 2021. You can see all of our, and we're going to put those into the minutes if you don't mind, Mr. Gibbs, as you're looking at this, December of 2021, you can see it also. So November, December, and January, we end up supporting having these individuals get their stipends. So what I said was, okay, so there's something else going on. You know, if it's agreeable that we've done it in the past, then that's one thing, but if we haven't, then I've got an issue, and I'd like to amend the current motion to remove Wardell Jefferson Collins from basketball head coach supplement until after the arbitration is complete, and then we can do our due diligence. There's a motion on the floor. Here's this one, this is August of this year.
Amended motion, is there any second? Sorry, my mic's not on. I have an amended motion, is there any second?
Second.
Second and open for discussion on that motion, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Susan, do you have any additional discussions since it was your original motion?
My thing is, is that I just feel like right now, in the middle of an arbitration, that it's difficult for us as a board to make a decision on an individual. It may be preemptively, and I'll tell you why. Here's the other piece, the social emotional of a team, okay? So as a former coach, if I hear that I have this one coach and everybody gets behind, and they start putting together this team and they start going, then all of a sudden, we lose the arbitration. Now those kids have to get another coach. And I'll be honest with you, as a coach, as a coach who has gone through multiple seasons in multiple sports, in transitions, it's difficult, because teams get put in between things and they don't get an opportunity to just play. And I think that preemptively, us putting this person in as the coach prior, while there's an arbitration goes on, goes against that. That's my feeling. And I will answer any questions, but intimately for me, this is, you know, something that I feel strong about.
So, I have a question. So what happens? Do we just put the basketball team on hold, that they won't have a basketball team until we figure out this arbitration?
They don't start till November. Why do it now?
So when you say start, is that when they start playing or when they start practicing?
We can ask when it starts, but basketball generally doesn't start until the end of October, early November, and we have an arbitration in file.
I'm just saying, I don't want it to be a penalty to the students who want to play basketball and not have any practice.
It's a good question. I would say that, I know that basketball doesn't start until after a couple of months into the season, but I would hope that the union and the negotiations would come forward and get this resolved prior, for the betterment of our kids.
Just for the record, I believe arbitration dates are being kicked around, and we're in October or November.
Well, let's just say, we don't have to make a decision today, we don't have to make it right now. We don't. We don't have to make it now, we can make it in 30 days, we can make it in 45 days. But I will tell you right now, we are jumping the gun to allow an individual to go in to start coaching because of the social emotional of our students and having two different coaches. I'll tell you that much right now.
Can I jump in for a second? Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're keeping in, so if everybody gets an opportunity to speak.
Sorry, we have that whole thing. I apologize. I thought I was being asked a question or challenged with this thing.
You're good. Ms. Jenkins?
So I agree. I think it's weird that we're doing this in the middle of a very obvious, we know we're having an arbitration, we know where the discrepancies lie. And just for me personally, I find it really difficult to read that language of that arbitration decision and understand how it's being applied in this situation. So I'm with Mr. Susan on this one. I don't want it to affect our students, but at the same time, it's a very obvious result in my personal opinion, and I don't understand why we're doing it in the first place.
Ms. Campbell, did you want to speak?
I would just speak particularly to Mr. Susan's, you know, addressing, you know, what we do or don't do in August, and so, you know, I hear you, and I'm not going to look through every single page, I trust you that we didn't do that in August, but we did, we do some other ones in the summer. I just look back just really quickly in our board meetings from the summer, we did, at the end of June, we did for Edgewood, a couple of supplemental positions, dance corps, future problem solving. Earlier in June, we did a softball assistant coach, a head track coach at Tardisville, and some other supplemental positions. So I, you know, as Dr. Thedy said, you know, we approve them as they come in, because we have supplemental positions on almost every agenda.
Ms. Campbell, those supplements were from the previous year.
Hang on.
They weren't for the now year, they're from the previous year.
Okay, oh, I got you. You know what? There you go, you're correct. But almost every agenda throughout the year, we approve the supplements as they roll in as they get hired. So I also wonder, just as a, is there even a grievance to be had if we actually haven't hired them? I mean, because they're not officially hired until the board approves process, I mean, the principal has hired them, but, you know, does that make sense?
The recommendation's being made, so it creates the grievance.
Okay, all right. I don't know that I necessarily right now need to weigh in on my opinion one way or the other, but I don't, I would, don't want to put a pause on this, no. I'd rather just move forward with hiring the coach as recommended by the principal, who's already made their selection.
Ms. Belford, may I respond to the other supplements that were done over the summer since it referenced me?
Could I ask some questions first, since I haven't spoken yet?
Absolutely.
And then I'll come back to you for response to them.
Thank you.
And I don't know who is best to answer this question, whether it's Dr. Mullins, Mr. Gibbs. What is the impact of not approving this item tonight?
Dr. Thedy, would you like to respond to that? He understands the hiring process, but I'm not, I'll mess it up.
I just don't want to put her on the spot without you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. As far as when the supplements come in, we do approve them, we take them as they come from the schools. The impact of pulling it tonight, if we can bring it back on the next board agenda, it wouldn't have a huge impact, but there is preseason play and all those other things that come into play with FHSA. I don't want to speak to FHSA rules and when the season begins, because I don't have it in front of me right now.
I do know that, I had confirmed the basketball season begins October 30.
And so, you mentioned that we typically approve the supplements when they come in from the schools, so is it just like our schools were more efficient this year in getting all of their coaches' names turned in, and that's why we're seeing this in August? Do you, or you don't know, because you guys just approve them when they come in, as long as they fit requirement?
We approve them when they come in, and we send out the memo in the summertime.
Okay. And Mr. Gibbs, from a procedural standpoint, the amended motion that's on the floor is to remove one individual's name from this particular agenda item and approve the remainder of the agenda item. Is that procedurally appropriate for?
Yeah, you can approve just everybody without the one, so that's the motion that he's made, and it's been seconded, so.
So what I'm hearing from you, Dr. Thedy, is if this is not approved tonight, it needs to be approved at the next meeting?
I'm not necessarily saying at the next meeting, but we have to approve the coaches before. We typically approve them before the season begins, but Mr. Susan is correct, there are occasions when that doesn't happen, if we don't have a coach on board at the time, but we approve them as they come in.
And so if we go through this, I just want to make sure I understand all the sides of it. So if we go through with the approval tonight, and then the arbitration goes forward, and we lose the arbitration, what is the process at that point?
It depends on the outcome of the arbitration. It depends on what the arbitrator decides.
We would have to go through some process to reverse the decision if the arbitrator said that we should have chosen differently, correct?
Yes, it would depend on what the outcome is and what the arbitrator, what the remedy is that the arbitrator puts forth to the district.
Okay. And you said currently we're looking at October or November for dates for arbitration?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Susan, I think that is the remainder of my questions, if you would like to respond or address.
Thank you so much. So I looked at it, and going back as far as I could, and I apologize about not having, I think it was 2020, for some reason, we don't have those minutes on the internet when I was trying to get to it. So it goes like back down to 22, hits a couple 21, and jumps like down to 19. So everything that I looked at from June, July, August, we have never hired a sporting coach for basketball during that time. There is a question of when the season starts. Practice starts, just like Dr. Mullins said, for girls and boys would be the last two or three days of October or the first couple days of November. It's always what ends up happening. So I want to tell you guys, from my perspective, I took over a wrestling team literally the day before season started, and I took them to an undefeated season, and I won Coach of the Year for the county. So to say that you need to get in there way before to put our legal liability in jeopardy to take kids and have them go the wrong way, I just don't think it's worth it to me. So I would say that we don't have to truly make a decision as a former coach until October. And I think that it behooves the union to bring this thing forward, not to drag it out, if that's the case, or our union or our lawyers to get it taken care of. And I would reiterate, just remember this, if we make this decision, which has already been lost by the district by subject matter, but there is some differences, like Dr. Mullins pulled out, and we lose again, we have to take a group of children that have been told they have one coach and put in another coach, which causes an acostic environment for that coach going in, and that's tough. I've been there before, I've seen it before, it's really a bad thing. That's why I decided that I think it's a bad thing, and I would vote to support the amendment.
Can I make one more statement and/or question? I'm going to keep it really simple, but, you know, as school board members, do we not have the authority to request that this just be expedited and not delay this process longer than it needs to be? If we know that this is going to impact children, if we hold off on it till October... If we know that this is going to impact children, if we, if we hold off on it till October, then why are we not just trying to get this done as soon as possible? Don't we have the authority just to make that statement really clear to the superintendent?
I think, I think they're lining up their attorneys and I think after this meeting they'll probably do it.
Right, I just want to make it clear though, if we're, if we, you know, if, if this does go through where we vote to say that we don't want to, you know, accept this right here and now, we have the authority as school board members to make it very clear that we don't want this to impact children. So, just putting that out there.
She's just saying, let's, let's let the attorneys know, get together and let Paul let them know that if there's somebody else that needs to jump in there so that we can make it happen, and we're letting the, the, the union know. You know what I mean? Let's make it happen. Yeah, they will.
Anybody else?
If I can just provide some additional clarification, just to keep in, if I remember correctly, Dr. Thedy, teachers actually, if they are coaches, they actually don't go on the board agenda for approval. Is that right? Only community coaches do because they're newly appointed?
No, the teachers go on supplemented positions.
Okay. I'm not sure what is being suggested or proposed. I would, Dr. Thedy, you're involved in the arbitration process. You correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that it is moving to an arbitrator is because the union's attorneys and our attorneys disagree. And so, the disagreement that has to be presented to an arbitrator. If we, we're as interested in, in a expedited arbitration as the union would be, but I don't know that that can occur before October 31st, given schedules and, and that type of thing. So, I would assume we're, we're as interested in, in working through this process as quickly as possible, but we're confined by, by schedules. Is that?
That's true.
Okay.
So, I just stated that we've never had a, a single coach hired before on the supplements before August of the year for basketball. Season doesn't start until August 20th, October 25th or November 1st, right in between there. We have plenty of time until October 15th. We have at least four board members' meetings probably until then. We have time to do that. We established all of that stuff and I, I think it behooves us to do the right thing. That's all. Thank you.
I guess my question would be, if the arbitration hasn't happened by the September board meeting or the October board meeting, then are, are, then we're back to where we are today?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I'm not sure, but I think, Ms., sorry.
Jenkins?
Are you suggesting that you would like the board to go ahead and weigh in, you know, aside from the arbitration, what we think, this is, we, how we would want to direct the superintendent and the hiring of this position? Is that what you're suggesting? Because we can't move the arbitration.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, I understand that there, there is going to be a scheduling situation going on, but I think if we just make it very clear that we want to get this done as soon as possible and expedited as soon as possible, then let's make that happen. And, you know, if it doesn't happen before October 31st, then technically any one of you can put this back on the agenda if you wanted to, the way it is today.
Yep.
Dr. Thedy, I'm understanding that whatever happens in the arbitration, whatever way it goes, let's say this coach that's currently on the agenda starts coaching, is it necessarily that the arbitrator would say, okay, get rid of that coach and put in this coach? Or would there be another outcome where you, it should have gone to the other person, so you now have to pay for that coach and keep the current coach in place? Does that ever happen?
There could be a variety of outcomes, Mrs. McDougal. I, I can't comment on, because I don't know what's going to happen in this case.
So, at the same time, again, my big concern is for our students to be able to play and I want to make sure that we as a board are willing to relook at this if we decide to pull this now. And, Dr. Thedy, can you bring that to the next board meeting or do we have to bring it or how does, Paul, how does that work?
It can be placed back on the agenda once it's scheduled. If we know it's going to be scheduled in November, it's not going to go off before the start of season so that everybody will know, if that's what you guys are wanting to decide.
I would like this arbitration to happen before November, before June, at tryouts. Right.
I kind of like where you're, I like where you're going with this. I kind of do. Maybe we arbitrarily put it on the agenda for October, whatever, 13, 15, something like that. And then let them know that this is the way it's going to happen. In the previous litigation that we had or arbitration, what they did was they found in favor of this teacher at Viera High School and they said this teacher will become the coach. So, that will probably be the outcome, that one or the other will become coach. And again, I'm not in the middle of who's better, anything else. This is purely process, like, and what I know it does to kids when you switch.
If you don't mind, Ms. Belford, I'm sure there's people in the audience who have no idea what's going on, so just to clarify for all of us, make sure we're all on the same page, us as well as anybody that might be listening. We have a situation where, you know, one side is saying that the situation is if we have a coach position, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Thedy, if I'm understanding correctly, that we have a coach position like a basketball coach that we're talking about tonight, and we have someone who is a teacher at the school who applies to that position, who's qualified, they have to be qualified, whatever FHSAA requires, and we have somebody from the community who is also qualified, but they're not a teacher. If there is at least one teacher who applies, the teacher automatically gets the job, you know, regardless of experience, regardless.
No, they have to meet criteria and be very close.
That's what I'm saying. If, if they are both qualified, they have to meet the qualifications.
But it can't be that you have a teacher that's just got no experience, horrible, everything else, and then they trump.
I didn't say horrible.
But you kind of alluded to that.
But, okay.
Okay.
All right. But then, but then if there's, it's not necessarily all things being equal between the two, I would say. It's the interpretation, that the teacher gets the position and that the principal doesn't have the choice in, in that, to pick between the two. He has to pick the teacher and that's the interpretation that the union is, is Mr. Kaluji was referring to, rather than that the principal can choose the, in their judgment, the best qualified candidate, regardless of whether they're a teacher or a community coach. Am I understanding that correctly?
The issue is, there is a teacher and a community coach and the principal selected a community coach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for making it so, so plain there, Dr. Thedy. We appreciate that.
That's what Dr. Thedy's good at.
Less words is better.
She organizes our chaos.
So, so I will tell you, I, I am not necessarily opposed to approving the amendment if we can have an arbitration date set prior to the next board meeting so that we know what the timeline is on it and if we need to move forward on the issue. Is that, is that a likely outcome? Do either of you know?
The attorneys are talking.
Not scheduled.
Yeah, so the attorneys are talking about when it's going to be scheduled, so it's...
But not, not like, like, I don't, I don't mean, can we get it scheduled? Like, take place before the next board meeting? No, I'm not asking that.
You want to know when it's scheduled, yes.
Yeah, so do you feel like we would have a definitive date of arbitration by the time we come back together?
I would hope by September because that's our next meeting.
Okay.
A date set, yeah. Because that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that does exactly what Jenkins wants to do.
Correct.
Which is kind of get them giddy up and go.
Which, if we can, is great, and if not, then I think we need to revisit the issue. So, that would, that's where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
Are you, is anyone opposed to me calling the question at this point in time?
Can I, can I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure.
That we would go ahead and put it forward to the next, in, just, you know, that we put it forward to the next agenda, which would be September, the, whatever.
I don't think we necessarily need an amendment on that. I think that can probably be board direction to ask that it be brought back. Would you agree, Ms.?
Yeah, staff has time to just add it to the September agenda if you want.
To get, to get opposing councils to agree within 30 days of a date, they can't do that. That is a very good request.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I can't guarantee schedules of attorneys and an arbitrator match up, so.
Well, I withdraw.
Well, if we have an attorney who can't meet with them, then we should find another attorney to meet with them.
You have three parties that are trying to coordinate schedules and they're all very busy, so.
I know.
So, I, I think that we have come to a good place. Do you guys get with me calling the question?
Yes.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The amended motion passes 5-0. Okay.
Bacon cheer.
Yeah, so, do you, we need, no, because we approved the amended motion, right? So, now we need to approve item F-13 independently or is that taken care of?
No, the F-13 wasn't, was done without the one person.
Yeah, so we just removed that individual from, and F-13 is approved. So, that means that we are done on consent agenda, correct, Mr.?
Thank God.
All right, Mr. Susan, all those discussion points you have at the end, you just use them all your time.
I'll talk really fast.
Just kidding. All right, Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about items under the action portion of today's agenda?
The first item is H-29 procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougal, second by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item H-30 is department school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We are now at board member discussion points and reports. Mr. Susan added five items under this category for discussion this evening. Mr. Susan?
Hey, listen, we get, we get paid. So, we came, we had a situation last, last school board meeting, which you guys really supported, right? And it had to deal with female wrestling and giving them the ability to get the stipends. And Dr. Mullins so eloquently said that due to Title IX, because we have the situation between girls and boys having the same teams, we have to get it no matter what. Something else came up and this just literally came to my desk from parents who have beach volleyball. So, let me give you a little bit of background. About two and a half years ago, I was approached from the Tourism Development Council to create a beach volleyball network internally inside of our schools so that we could then compete and they could bring beach volleyball championships to provide. They already do in many ways, but what ended up happening is, is that I said, okay, so I contacted the county, the county set out and created some beach volleyball locations, ones up in Merritt Island, I think, and a couple other ones. And we have some other places where the kids actually practice, right? So, these kids have been practicing way before this moment for the last 20 years and we've actually got national championship kids that come out of here, full ride scholarships on beach volleyball, and we've never had an official program. So, FHSAA came out with an official program and they said, hey, you know, they, now it's an official FHSAA sport, it's a female sport, it helps with our equity, we are off-centered, we have, because, you know, on the boys' side, we have like 600 male football players. And so, our numbers are like 46, 54 right now with female to male, and then with cheerleading, along with the wrestling, which is only a couple. And then with this, it would bring us up really close. We'd be one of the best equitable districts in the state of Florida and it would be close to being like 49 to 51. So, I said, man, let's go. So, instead of just losing the opportunity to field a team, I thought, let's do this. And on top of that, we can get the TDC to create a state championship here and our team can win it. And I'm telling you, because nobody throughout the state has beach volleyball teams, if they do, they're not that good, but we've already been winning for years. We could literally field the state championship volleyball teams in their first season and we could host it and then we could own it for the next 20 years. Because if you look back, Cocoa Beach, Cape Canaveral, that is beach volleyball territory. And I really feel that we need to give the opportunity to this. Now, I'll, I'll explain to you the negatives. The negatives are, they're going to say, we don't have any beach volleyball facilities. Totally agree. They already have facilities, they've already been practicing, playing and everything else. Well, those aren't BPS facilities. Well, remember, Viera doesn't have their own baseball field. There's many other sports that don't have their own facilities that we rent out or we have collaboration agreements that Mr. Tobias is trying to take away from us, right? So, let's go further than that. The next one is, is, well, maybe not all the schools are out there wanting to participate. I will tell you, we will only have less than four schools. But, in many sports, we don't have all the sports participating in all the schools. So, what I would like to do is give direction to Dr. Mullins to say, hey, try to make this thing work. Try to work towards a yes, see if we can do it. It's a very small, minimal amount of stipends. We field a couple of teams. Championship team will probably come out of Ms. Jenkins's district. Really?
Oh, we got Merritt Island?
Merritt, you think Merritt Island's going to field a team to beat Ms. Jenkins's team?
Oh, I think so.
Anyways, I would just like to have Dr. Mullins look at it with a, hey, let's try to get there, bring it back to the next board meeting. If we can get it to go, they've already got their teams, they've already got their players. They would love to get the opportunity and it would help us with equity. That's all. That was my idea. And I found out about this a few days ago. Sorry about it being the last minute item.
Ms. McDougal, there is a sand volleyball court at Satellite High School.
You know, the Mustangs always rise to the occasion, so.
Anyways, so I would like that. I didn't know what your feelings were. If you guys are okay with Dr. Mullins just working on it, bringing it back as soon as possible, I think we go. And then I'd like to see you guys wear off in a mano a mano beach volleyball match against each other and I'll referee it.
Yes, pretty much.
You guys good with that? Any negatives?
Mullins, weigh in at all from your perspective?
Well, this only came to my attention yesterday as well, so I'm certainly not prepared to give the pros, the cons, the impacts, the costs, the implications across 16 high schools. So, I can certainly, if that's the wishes of the board, work with my staff to identify those answers and be prepared to present something to the board, if not at the next board meeting by the end of September.
Which will give us plenty of time because the season doesn't start until the end of October and November.
Beach volleyball season is actually in February.
Oh, whatever, so we got some time.
He does know more than you.
Are you sure it is?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. We got plenty of time to do this. All right. Dr. Mullins, teacher shortage plan. Yeah, but, like, like, literally, like, here's the deal. We have, so here's what happened, so everybody in the, in the, in the crowd knows. We, my, my child went to school the other day and many families went into school and walked into a school where they find out that possibly they have a substitute right now with no end, that a library books were turned opposite way or missing, that they don't know, like, what is the plan? And last time we talked about this, we talked about the fact that we came through COVID and we did a good job, but this is a little different. This is a long-term sustained problem. So, I just wanted to give Dr. Mullins the opportunity, talked a little bit about it, but we're, we, we have staff and stuff going in. But what I was looking at is this, there's 51 people sitting inside of our stands right now and you guys, with all intents and purposes, will be here for about two hours tonight. And that's 102 minutes that we could have had given from your time volunteered to our students. And we need to start doing some of that stuff, which is where everybody starts volunteering and coming into our schools and working hard. So, when we do that, we'll be able to bridge the gap to help out some of these teachers and stuff like that. I want to give Dr. Mullins the opportunity to just say, hey, what's the teacher shortage plan as far as addressing it? plan as far as addressing it, and he pretty much did it already, but I want to talk about it.
Well, I could certainly go back to my PowerPoint slides.
Oh, you want to be, you want to get loud?
But, you know, Mr. Susan, I, I will, I will reemphasize, number one, our principals have, well, our directors for leading and learning, both elementary and secondary and assistant superintendents, are in literally daily communication with our schools. They are confident every school has a plan to address the needs of their campus right now, and we will welcome our students, ready to serve them tomorrow, we will work through the adjustments. I can't tell, we go through this kind of adjustment every year through six-day count process. Some schools lose teachers because of enrollment, other schools gain teachers. So we, we will have that shuffling adjustment, just like we have every other year. We will have new extended day opportunities becoming, answering some of the problems and the, the challenges we're facing, because numbers in one class don't make, that, that class has already collapsed, and they pick up another section. I mean, it is literally, it reminds me of, okay, I'm going to age myself. Remember the little square number game where you got like 36 tiles and they're all, this is pre Rubik's Cube? And you got to get all the numbers in the right order, and you only have one empty chip. That's what our master, master schedule and teacher staffing is like in the first days of school, particularly when we're anticipating some enrollment, uh, growth that weren't built into our projections. So, listen, I put my name behind the principals we have serving our schools, I put my every last ounce of confidence behind my team who has worked tirelessly all summer to support our schools and meet their needs. We have faced bigger challenges than going into a new school year than I think we're going to face now. Is it any less challenging? No, it isn't. But I've got a, we've got an amazing team of people who are going to tackle it and address it. The numbers I presented aren't accurate as we talk right now, they're, they're probably different from when I presented them an hour ago, because our, our, our staff are working crazy number of hours onboarding people and so on. So, um, I'm, we will work through all of these processes. From, from the standpoint of parents helping and supporting our schools, 110,000%. We've already rolled out our mentoring program that is supported and established on our website. I, everywhere I go, I talk, everywhere I go, I talk about the, the mentoring opportunity we have for our community to engage in our schools and get involved in a young person's life. Uh, our principals are ready and prepared to talk to our community about that. Our schools are open and ready to talk with parents and community members about volunteering in our schools. We absolutely need volunteers in every single one of our media centers. We no longer have media assistants, we have increased obligations on our media specialists right now. It would be my, um, shameless ask for our community to answer the call to have every media center in Brevard Public Schools covered by parent volunteers Monday through Friday, every single day of the rest of the school year. It's planned, it's purposeful, it's impactful. So I know our principals would receive and welcome that interest and that opportunity, and it's flexible, one day a week. Commit every third Monday at your child's, uh, media center to serve as the check-in, checkout, get books back on the shelf and that type of thing. So, um, I don't know if I'm
No, you did.
Reiterating the, the points that you wanted me to, Mr. Susan, but number one, we, we are prepared and we're ready to receive our kids. Number two, our schools are open and ready to receive parents and families to get engaged and get involved, so welcome those opportunities.
So we have, we have resource teachers, we have individuals inside the district that are filling all of those positions, and in the long run, we're going to have to figure out the next step. Because if we're sustaining 100 vacancies, there's going to be a next step. But in the short run, very difficult to do the master schedule and everything else. So that's all. I just wanted to kind of, when we put that down there, I didn't see that inside the slides, so that's it. Good? All right, classroom libraries and book fairs, here we go. So, there's been two school board meetings where our staff has gotten up here and said that there's no direction to the schools to do exactly what we're seeing in some of the schools. And so I wanted to give Dr. Mullins the opportunity to address everybody again for a third time, because it seems that there's people that are misinterpreting what's happening out there. I wanted to read you guys, the actual bill doesn't become law that everybody's referencing until January 1st of 2023. It says that media specialists are supposed to be trained and ready by January of 2023. So in the meantime, what we're doing is, is we're seeing some people that are doing something different, and I wanted to give Dr. Mullins an opportunity to address that or have staff do it.
Before Dr. Mullins speaks, can I just jump on that, because I, I actually have to trump you on something there. I don't necessarily agree with one statement that you made. We were literally emailed a presentation that some of our staff was presenting just the other day.
Which I requested.
Yes, and within it, it, it did instruct people to vet the books inside of their classroom if any of them are talking about sexual orientation or gender identity, to remove them from their classroom libraries. Um, and if they couldn't vet them automatically on our follet system, but they had to wait until they're vetted to be used and that they must be removed. So I do want to make that clear, there are staff members who are getting instructions to do those things, um, and so it's not unjust for them to be concerned, confused, and want to have clear expectations across the board, because some schools are being told one thing when another school is being told another. And full disclosure, I mean, I've called Dr. Mullins multiple times from people reaching out to me, both parents and teachers, because they're all, you know, we do have over 80 schools, we have multiple administrators, and sometimes these things are not being conveyed equally across the board, so just wanted to, to jump over that.
So I wanted to make, say, when I was, wanted to complete what I was saying, let me read the text from the actual bill. Beginning January 1st, 2023, media specialists and other personal personnel involved in the selection of school district library materials must complete the training program developed pursuant, and then it goes on to do the statute, before reviewing and selecting appropriate materials and library resources. It was referenced by the union that we may be overstepping right now, and I think when I was talking to Dr. Mullins earlier, he stated that they're, that's what exactly is going on, because there's no direct, district directive to be removing libraries and everything else. I want to give Dr. Mullins the opportunity to address it.
Lots, I will do my, my best to be as, as concise as possible. First, Mr. Susan, just as clarification, and I'm looking back to, uh, Ms. Harris and Dr. Sullivan. If I'm correct, we did receive a memo from Chancellor Aliva verifying that House Bill 1467 went into act July 1st. Is that correct? So, we have received DOE direction that the statute is in place July 1st. All of the contents of it. The contents include reference to the DOE being required to provide training to media specialists no later than January. And they have, the DOE has also indicated that they are working on that training and will provide it likely in a virtual format toward the end, the impression was, I don't remember the exact language, toward the end of first semester. So we, we do have the responsibility to do our best to interpret and honor the law. And that is, I, I've explained, I, I think to board members, one, we are intentionally not trying, let me make sure I said that right, we're intentionally not trying to overinterpret the law. Read it for it is, for its simple fact, for its simple word. At the same time, we're obligated and responsible for honoring the law. And third, we are trying to preserve our staff, our people who are boots on the ground, from being caught in the middle of overinterpretation, interpretation, and honoring and revering the law. So, is there going to be challenges of what individuals' interpretation of, is of that along the way, even with our most admirable attempts to provide clear and concise guidance? I would, I would suggest yes, when we have hundreds of staff, nearly 100 schools trying to manage this. We did meet with media specialists last week and provide them guidance for classroom teachers. One, look through your classroom library like you likely would be every year, make sure there is not a text that is there that you didn't intend for it to be there. Yes, we are obligated to make sure that there isn't text that it shouldn't be there in kindergarten through third grade, like the law requires. Second, take your books and, and go into our online system of follet, which is our electronic media center program. If it is in follet, it is automatically evaluated or reviewed by a media specialist, because all of our texts in follet have been reviewed by a media specialist. And so, then it's, it's good to go. And third, if there is a book in your classroom library that isn't in follet, take it to your media specialist, if they have the time, they have lots of things going on right now, that may be, takes them more time than you'd necessarily like, but, um, if the media specialist evaluates it and says you're good to go, then, then it can go back in your classroom library. So, you know, have we potentially had staff go to one extreme or another, potentially? And in every instance, I've worked with staff, and I know staff have already gone and worked more closely with schools and staff to bring the appropriate response to that. There's been some additional confusion around instructional materials that, uh, and supplemental materials that have to be reviewed, uh, versus have to be listed. Our classroom library books do not have to be listed on the website, but instructional materials used do have to be presented and posted on our website. So our staff are working, because staff are getting confused, that is it this, is it that? In spite of our meeting with department heads, meeting with media specialists, and so on. As much as I've talked to some board members about some of the challenges, I, yes, we've had some miscommunication, some overinterpretation, uh, but it's been limited, in my opinion, with the number of impact that we have across literally 90 places of learning. So, um, no, libraries are not closed, libraries are open and available to our kids and to our families. Uh, book fair, book fairs have not been banned, there has been no direction from the district to stop book fairs. Uh, have some schools who normally have done a book fair, like during registration, said, mm, you know what, given everything we have going on, uh, we're going to delay our book fair. They have. They've also got staff, we're understaffed, and they're trying to get schools ready and open, and they've made some school-by-school decisions, but it's not been from a district directive that book fairs are not going to be available to our students. They will be, we're working with our vendors to make sure they're fulfilling their responsibilities in, uh, reviewing books and, and so on. So, um, honestly, our families and our kids should see very little, if any, difference or impact from the schools and classrooms they left in May to the ones they return to tomorrow. But, I know that the board has expressed some concern, I have spent quite a bit of time on this issue with, uh, my staff who are in the back. If there is more clarification needed, I am, I'm happy to provide it or, or ask some of my very capable staff to come up. Kara and Dr. Sullivan, kind of give me a, a thumbs up or stand, thumbs up if I pretty much covered it, or stand up if there's something I need to add. Thumbs up from Dr. Sullivan, from, okay.
I, I just, I don't know if there's another response from Manny Diaz, but the one that I have here is response to federal guidance on the meaning of sex discrimination under Title IX. I have not received anything or seen anything from Manny Diaz that says that the law that was written is now in effect with libraries. Can somebody help me there?
If you go to It came from Chancellor Jacob Aliva, who is the, who's chancellor, not commissioner of education. I'm happy to provide it. Typically, those memos don't go to school board members, they go to superintendents and staff, but I'm happy to forward that to the board.
Okay, so
If you go to 1467 on HB at the Florida site, it says effective July 1st, 2022.
The, the law, the bill says absolutely July 1st, but what you're saying is, and this is really, really a little bit crazy, is that the commissioner on education decided that he was going to take a law that was supposed to interpret, go into effect January 1st, and says, we're just going to do it now. Okay, all right. Then can you send that to me? Because I haven't seen that memo, and when we discussed this earlier, there was no conversation about that. And so that's, that's, you know, but it is.
I'll send the, I'll forward the memo to the board before the end of the evening.
May I just make another comment?
All right.
I just want to, um, just kind of just make another statement, but, you know, this law has very broad language throughout it, with very significant threats to our staff members and, quite frankly, to our children's education. And I understand the tension on, on, on both sides of this issue, I really do. I understand feeling like the district might be overreacting, but at the same time, I do have to say, the district is also overreacting to protect their staff members, because that language is so broad. Um, but, again, I have advocated on the side of being as cautious as possible and, and not rushing, not rushing to implementing these things, because there are significant impacts to, to our students and to our education and to our curriculum. I just encourage our staff members, who are typically very comfortable reaching out to me, emailing me, calling me with their concerns, take a pause when you're told something, and reach out to somebody and have a conversation, because this isn't, this is not a simple solution. This is very confusing, the language is very, very broad. We do have a ton of schools, and it's really easy to have a game of telephone going on where one thing is said, and it might be relayed maybe the wrong way. But just to have a little grace on both sides. And I, at least, I can speak for myself, I mean, I will be receptive to whatever you're saying, and I, and Dr. Mullins has been receptive to every concern that I've brought forward to him to try and address it directly, too. So, um, we have to, we have to stick as a, stick together as a team in this situation, because, again, it's confusing, it's broad, there is literally zero direction from the Department of Education, other than this law is now implemented. Have fun.
Can I, can I mention something we might want to do here? And it was what Dr. Mullins and I were talking, so I think we've come around to a full circle. There seems to be a lot of confusion, because we went to the media specialist, asked, presented them, they then took what we wanted, went back to their schools, presented them, and now we have teachers. So it's like that, I tell you, you tell you, you tell you, and by the time it got down to people, it's been disseminated. Be, be nice, as if Dr. Mullins could send out a memo saying, here's what is required, here's what we're looking for, so that everybody can read that directly and say, hey, this is what we need, rather than telling people, you know what I mean? Rather than saying like, hey, we told the media specialist, media specialist does this, because to your point, Ms. Jenkins, I feel that, um, the liability that, from a broad statement, stuff like that, puts us in danger in some areas, so maybe that, that would be a good, appropriate thing. Send it out to staff, say, hey, there's been some confusion on this, this is what we can put together, and this is what is expected of. I don't know how you feel about that, Dr. Mullins? We talked about it, and, you know, send in direction like that.
Well, I certainly won't, don't want to confuse the issue more. I'm confident in the, in the communication my staff has provided, I'll certainly review it all with them and reevaluate, and if, it is helpful if I send communication out in addition to what we've already done, um, I'm happy to consider that. But I, I would need to make sure I know exactly how we've communicated it to staff already, which I know has been in multiple venues, through our leadership team packet, to our principals and principal meetings, presentations, and so on. I would suspect if we can just get started, the, the tension and confusion is going to be, um, resolved, because our classrooms are open, our media centers are open, our li, books, uh, classroom libraries are available to students, um, but I'll certainly reevaluate it.
I, go ahead, I'm sorry, I keep jumping ahead.
No, I, I would echo what Ms. Jenkins said, and that is, you know, the actions that the staff has taken have been in protection of our staff and our teachers. And, you know, what I've been telling people is, this is a process, and it's going to have to get worked out, and it's not going to be perfect from the get-go. And sure, there's going to be some questions, and yes, there's going to be some, hey, right now, while we're still in this period of not knowing all of the details and all of the expectations, we're going to have to be a little bit more prudent and a little bit more proactive in ensuring that we're doing the best we can to protect our faculty and our staff. And as we get through this process, and we have more hands on deck to vet books, and we have more opportunity for principals to have conversation with their faculty about it, and we have hopefully some clarity from the state. Um, to your point, Mr. Susan, yeah, it's pretty ridiculous that we passed a law effective July 1st and no training until January. But it's not the most ridiculous thing we've seen out of our legislators by any stretch of the, guys, hold, hold your applause, please.
I'm sorry, I clapped, I clapped, too.
It is not the greatest stretch that we have seen, you know, the most ridiculous thing that we have seen, and so the reality is that all of us, as board members, right, advocating for our community, as Dr. Mullins and his staff, have been trying to work through this lunacy to ensure that we are protecting our faculty and staff and putting a process in place. So regardless of what is in place tomorrow, that doesn't mean that that's what's going to be in place in three weeks, right? As we have the opportunity to, to work through all that. So, you know, I, I think, you know, Ms. Jenkins mentioned grace on both sides, and I think that's a, a very appropriate ask. that's a very appropriate ask at this point in time. Because, you know, I'll, I'll share with you, too. I have, I got an email from a parent today that has a gifted child that's reading at, she's in fourth grade and reading at a sixth or seventh grade level, and she doesn't have any books available to her child, because we're, you know, keeping it to grade level. And so, there's going to be bumps in the road to our parents, to our teachers, I can promise you, there are going to be bumps in the road. And we're going to just have to work through it to the best of our ability. You know, and, and to your point, Mr. Susan, I understand what you're asking, but at the same time, there is no, every school is different, right? What we're gonna do in a kindergarten classroom is gonna be different than what we're gonna do in a ninth grade classroom or a 12th grade classroom. And so, I just, I, I think we are right on the cusp of starting school tomorrow and let everyone get into their groove, and if we need to check back in and address some things, I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to do that, but it is frustrating. We hear it.
Yeah, and here's what it comes down to, is, is that student that comes to school, that parent that gets called and says, we don't have any library books, because that teacher, in my classroom, that teacher decided to take it over step, just like you said, right? And now, all of a sudden, that parent decides and says, you know what, I'm just, this isn't the public school that I want. I want the public school that has the things that they had, and I'm pulling them out and going to homeschool, because that's the conversation I had with about 21 people. And that was, and, and there's no lie. And so, just hang on, Dr. Mullins. So the bottom line is, is this, is that giving direction to our staff when they're sitting there and they're not sure about what to do, I would say is the appropriate thing. Obviously, the board doesn't feel the need for it, Dr. Mullins is kind of saying, give it some time. I would send an email out, I would send it out, and I would say, here's what we're sending guidance to, no matter if you're in first, second, third, fourth, fifth, this is the standards, and just do it. Because otherwise, we're gonna create more confusion than there, I've just never, I've never sat back and just let things go. That's all.
Well, I respectfully would disagree, we haven't let things go. We have intentionally, strategically, and consistently communicated with our staff across the organization. So, I have asked to review and make sure I understand all of the extents of that process, and if it is prudent, we'll, we'll do that again. It's not gonna happen between 8:45 Tuesday evening and 8 o'clock tomorrow morning, when our kids and families report to our schools. What I would respond to our families who are considering, they have questions about what their child's experience is in their classroom, to do what we have always done. Go to the principal of the school. Share your concern with the principal, ask the questions, ask for an explanation and to understand the why. If the why seems inconsistent with what we have said here, then we have a process. They go to the principal supervisor and follow that process. But if a family is gonna, a parent is gonna have an experience at the school that is contradictory to what they expected to see and not tell anyone before they depart from our schools, then that's, that's a difficult thing to prevent. So I can't implore our families enough. If you have concerns, if you have an experience in your child's school that is contradictory to what you expected or what you've heard from this superintendent, my staff, or this board, go to the principal. They are, they are the CEO of their school. And if questions remain, concerns remain, then we have a process to do that, to follow up on that as well. So I just want to provide that assurance to our community.
So I agree with you 100%. The only problem is, is that as an individual that might be sitting there as a parent, now all of a sudden, I'm gonna go to the principal to ask direction, who's also overseeing that school, it just causes a lot of work. People are gonna be asking questions, people are gonna say, well, that's not the rule, you need to provide this, it's just sending an email, and I didn't mean to send it by tomorrow morning, but sending an email out is appropriate to set direction as a, as a school district. Obviously, I don't have the push.
But I, I would just say, Mr. Susan, that a lot, they need to ask the question before they take what they see. I've particularly seen it on social media, and it's going like wildfire, fire, and that, you know, I've just, and I've gotten the content, you know, the text, too. Hey, I just heard that elementary schools aren't gonna have their libraries, kids aren't gonna be able to check out books. Where on earth did you hear that? Turn around, very next text, hey, PTO just said, we're not having a book fair, it's because of all the book banning that's going on, which, I mean, that is the rhetoric that is going around, and it's causing confusion, because people are hearing one thing and they're running wild with it, and it's not necessarily what's actually happening. So, it, I spent a lot of time with one of our media specialists on Saturday, we talked around, you know, what did the training, we walked through the PowerPoint, and what was said and what was not said, and so it is, you know, I understand the frustration and I understand the caution, but, you know, we can abide by this law, I have full faith, we can abide by this law and have libraries, we can abide by this law and have book fairs, we can abide by this law and have classroom libraries, we can do it. It, it may not be business as usual, but business as usual is kind of how we got into this situation, which is why, so it, it can be done. And so I, I would much rather go with what Dr. Mullins just suggested, which is, find out what's actually happening at your child's school, rather than what is going around on social media and assuming that it's happening in your child's classroom and at your child's school.
So these people, these people just called me, talked to me directly, wasn't social media. We have, every one of us has a situation where we're looking at people who are telling us different things, and the only way to communicate that to the 51 people here, or the 50 people that are watching online, there's only 100 people watching. We have 60 something thousand kids that are coming to school representing 100,000 teachers and parents, there's no way they're all gonna call the principal and ask questions over this and that, and it's just like, to just say, go. I, I just, I respectfully disagree, Ms. Campbell.
So, I just want to jump in here. With all due respect, we've been listening to this rhetoric for months, this is not new, it's not just social media, it's not just because this law passing, this has been happening for months and months and months. This has been a concern of our community once it started. I am with Mr. Susan, I believe we have an obligation to be proactive here, just put out a simple message, nothing crazy, because we don't have any direction from the Department of Education, but just put something out there to temper the flames as much as we possibly can. It will not stop all of the confusion, it will not stop all of the concerns, but there is literally no reason why we can't just jump ahead of this and say something simple and clean and give a little bit of direction, not only to the parents who are looking at social media like we're supposedly referencing here, but also to our staff. Our staff is exhausted already.
Hold your applause, please.
We're, we're just finishing pre-planning, and our staff is exhausted, and we have to recognize that these laws are literally attacking our staff members, they are on edge, and it doesn't hurt to just give them a little bit more direction and guidance from the top. Whether or not things were, were done correctly or incorrectly, it doesn't matter, just give them a little more guidance, give them a little more support and comfort, I, I think it would do us justice. I agree with Mr. Susan.
So I would, I would suggest, Ms. Jenkins, that Dr., and to everyone, go back, like, probably 10 minutes into this discussion, and Dr. Mullins said that he would absolutely, absolutely look at, look into the communication that has gone out, and, and provide follow-up communication if necessary. So, is, is there anything else on this specific topic that anyone feels the need to? All right, Mr. Susan, your next topic.
ROTC. So, right now, inside of our schools, I went and met with the ROTC instructors, and what they ended up doing is, is they said that there's been some instances throughout the past, and what's happened is, is that they wanted to increase their enrollment, but they were told no from the district, because they needed a third instructor, and we weren't about to do that from various reasons, right? And I said, well, let me meet with Dr. Mullins, I'm gonna one-on-one with him, let me find out what's going on, let me call the armed services, the individuals that oversee these accounts, stuff like that. I said, okay. So I called the armed services, and every single one of them, except for one that I couldn't get ahold of, said that in the event that the school district said that they would like to increase an instructor, that they would pay their portion, because not many people understand that an ROTC instructor is paid half by the school district, half by the military, right? And they have to provide that instructor and everything else, they have to come from the military branch. Okay, great. Second thing is, Dr. Thede, who's amazing, sat down with me, we walked through it, and she said, there's a couple of factors. There's the enrollment piece, then there's the par piece, and there's a couple of little barriers inside of there, which Dr. Mullins reiterated later on. But what I didn't want to happen is, is that if there's a group of students that want to do ROTC, and they go to register, to be told no, because there's not an instructor. And so I wanted to kind of get into that space and find out, how can we streamline the process to increase those without creating a situation where we're limited from other areas? And I'll explain why. If you have par, that's so many, so many teacher units that you have inside of your school, somebody might say, well, we want to be able to offer this to the school. Well, sometimes, if a student wants a certain career path, they shouldn't be held back from it, is all. So all I was saying is, is I'm just gonna work with Dr. Mullins, try to figure those pieces out, and report back to the ROTC instructors so that they understand what the process is, that's all. They don't think that it's the military or the school district coming out and saying that they can't have it. And to be honest with you, there's a bunch of, there's, some of our ROTC programs are actually declining in some areas, and one of the things that we found out, which Dr. Thede helped me out a little bit with, is, is that you can actually be a homeschool student or, and actually come in and take an ROTC class, which would help with our revenue, help with our enrollments and stuff like that. But I think there's just some good opportunity there to try to explain the process, tell them, here's what you can do, and from the board, after it comes back, in the event that we hear that they may want to increase a specific school, that they should be allowed to do that. And not one school actually reached out, they just said, here's some of the things that we have. So it's not like Merritt Island High, who's got an amazing ROTC program, said it or anything like that. You just think you got it that way. Vera's not bad. Anyways, does everybody understand that?
Space Force, or Space Force ROTC?
I had to put that on my Facebook post when I did it, I was like, ooh, this is gonna be kind of crazy, because I was looking for a junior ROTC logo for that, so cool. And my former place I taught for six years. Does everybody understand where I was going with that?
You need something?
No, I think Dr. Mullins, it's an easy process thing. All right? Yeah, I'm finished now. Sorry to hold everybody up. What's that? Oh, there's a second page to this?
Apparently, they're all.
Oh, yeah! Okay, Dr. Mullins has some good news about parents and student lunch, I forgot about that, we've been so busy. No, come on, Dr. Mullins, you ran through a bunch of stuff, there's a bunch of parents out there that want to hear about the student lunch. Student lunch is, is that right now, we don't have an opportunity to offer this.
I was trying to say something. Now you are.
No, he didn't want to, he said, he said, he said he already addressed it, but he tried to get out of it.
Talk about it.
Well, I want to talk about it again. Dr. Mullins? So here's what it is, if I'm a parent inside this school right now, I can't go to lunch with my parents. That was not the direction that we gave for the school board before, right? From the school board, before we ended the school year, we said, we were not gonna have that. Now, the difference is, is that Dr. Mullins said that we have security issues, we have capacity issues and all that stuff. But the one thing that he didn't say earlier in his presentation that we talked about, was that he wants, that the goal is not to keep parents out, the goal is to find a way to get there, and that he's gonna come back, I think it was like 30 days or something, and figure out a way to get to yes, to allow our parents to come in and eat during lunch.
I think that was part of my five minutes at the podium.
All right. Here we go.
To add on to that, I know people have been pretty upset about this, but, you know, if the goal is to be involved in your child's school, and I, I've shared this with Dr. Mullins before, I think in the meantime, I, I would like to see every school, especially at elementary schools, you know, the teenagers don't necessarily want their parents coming up very often, but especially at our elementary schools, for each school to be intentional in, to have some kind of way for parents, and a lot of our schools did a really great job at this all throughout the year, with parent nights and activity nights, to be intentional about having our parents on campus. So they, they, we have that, the COVID years where it, I, the community perceived that they were not welcome, we have to work hard to work against that. But I would say, for everybody who's listening, you have been given an invitation to get involved in your child's school, to be, and as someone who used to volunteer in the library, even back when my kids were little bitty, the media centers need volunteers, and that's be a great way, you can see your kids come through, and they get to come up and say hi, and, and you're serving the schools. And so that is a great way for people who want to be on the campuses, because you'll be there, but you'll also be helping, and we could really use you. So I just reiterate Dr. Mullins' challenge.
Thank you. Campbell? Any additional board discussion points? Okay. I want to do a quick check-in with the team, we have 13 non-agenda speakers, so each one is slated to get two minutes to speak. Going to keep us here about another 26 minutes, roughly. Does anyone need a break, or are you guys good for? Okay, I have a request for a quick break, so we'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we will come back. All right, we are back in session and ready to move into our non-agenda item speakers. Each speaker is limited to, to two minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop while the next speaker has a her turn. We will hear from the speakers in the order in which they signed up. As stated earlier, reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chair. Should audience participation interfere with speakers being heard or hearing me, I'll be forced to clear the room. When I call your name, please line up along the east wall of the boardroom to facilitate the smooth transition of speakers. Our first three speakers will be Vanessa Skipper, Michelle Beavers, and then Michael Bloom. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Skipper.
Vanessa Skipper, mom of a BPS student, English teacher, and vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers.
Vanessa, hold on one second for me. I got my, my clock is not happy.
That's, you can leave me all the time in the world.
Okay. There we go. All right, go ahead.
To say that I'm heartbroken to see what is happening in classrooms around the district with classroom libraries would be an understatement. The idea that students around this district are going to walk into their classrooms tomorrow and the only books they'll have access to are textbooks and curriculum is infuriating. While I understand that BPS is trying to respond to House Bill 1467, this harsh approach is not necessary. To say classroom libraries are open is simply not true. To say that media specialists have not been told that scholastic book fairs will not be happening is simply not true. To say follow-up clear communication should not go out is short sighted. We have teachers in tears. We have teachers who have not unpacked their classroom libraries. Our teachers are leaving in droves and this is a straw on their backs for some of them. They are losing the joy in teaching with the removal of access to things that make their classrooms inviting and fun places to be. One of the PowerPoints that was shown during pre-planning at our elementary schools stated that teachers needed to make cute signs saying that the classroom libraries were closed. You know what cute signs and empty libraries do? Reduce literacy. That's the exact opposite of what we're supposed to be doing as teachers. Also, to put the enormous responsibilities of approving individual titles from classroom libraries on our media specialists? Did I miss something or are y'all giving our media specialists their media assistants back? Are you going to compensate our media specialists and our teachers for the extra time they have to spend going through thousands of books in their classroom? And do you know how much money scholastic book fairs bring into our schools? For both of my sons, the scholastic book fair is meant to break from the classroom to go do something fun with books. It's really this simple. If parents don't want their child to go to the book fair, don't send money for them to buy anything. Don't punish all students for just a few. That's not good educational practice.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Audience, hold your applause, please. Michelle Beavers?
I want to say thank you to the teachers this year for coming back and being amazing. Uh, first thing I want to say is, Ms. De, you mentioned a little earlier that you wouldn't give, do what in a kindergarten classroom, what you would do in a 12th grade classroom. And that is exactly what a Mothers for Liberty person has said, and you've misquoted her. She said, to say there were slaves is one thing, to talk in detail about how slaves were treated and with photos is another, meaning that you wouldn't put those photos in the hands of a kindergartner. You, you, you mentioned that in an NAACP meeting, there is an organization that's active here locally and around the nation, that's been quoted as saying it's inappropriate to teach, I'm sorry, it's appropriate to teach slavery existed, but it's not appropriate to show pictures or describe how they were treated. That was not what she said, and you know that. You also went on to say the current leader of Brevard County went to Tallahassee and said, we are absolutely teaching critical race theory in Brevard Public Schools because we have pictures of black children in our textbooks. I dare you to find somebody who said that. You were actually tagged on a Facebook post publicly by Moms for Liberty and you untagged yourself instead of answering where you would have gotten that kind of quote. Um, so I think you should apologize, number one. Uh, number two, the emails that I sent last week, I'm sorry, on the 19th of last month, I said, nobody bothered to respond to them. It turns out nobody actually got them. They were sent from me. I called Dr. Mullins on, on Friday, the 29th. He was going to get back to me about what happened to my emails. I didn't hear back from Dr. Mullins and I also heard back finally from Katie, who said, my email appeared on Thursday of this last week. Now all of a sudden, my email has appeared. I don't know how that happened, but it was definitely sent the 19th and I approve it was sent the 19th and nobody here got it. So I'm, I'm being blocked. And I think that someone needs to answer for that. Um, and I'd like a really good reason why these books can't be behind a librarian's library desk and opted in by parents if they're sexually explicit. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. As Michael is approaching, Katie Delaney, Fred Kilgallen, and Carrie Drace, if you would please approach or move to the east wall.
Good evening. I'm a product of the public schools. I'm the son of an elementary music teacher and I was one of those students that read above grade level and above the books available in my grade school library. My parents installed the love of books in all their children. And one of the things I do now in my spare time is administer a local private cultural library. But I came tonight to speak in support of the board and all BPS students and support or teachers and support staff. The last few years have been trying for all of us and I commend the board and all staff for doing their best in unprecedented and trying circumstances. They have successfully accomplished all the normal school business while responding to both a global pandemic and multiple forces outside of the school district working to dismantle, destroy our public schools. I urge the board to continue to stand strong in the face of the ignorant and the ill-informed.
Michael, careful.
I urge the board to continue policies to keep all our students and staff safe from the COVID pandemic. I urge the board to continue to fight for the preservation of books in our libraries and classrooms and the teaching of factual history and factual science. I urge the board to fight for competitive pay for our teachers and our support staff. I urge the board to continue to work for equity for our diverse school population. Know that there are many citizens diligently working to elect school board members that will continue with the mission of serving every student with excellence as the standard.
Thank you, Michael. Audience, hold your applause, please. Ms. Delaney?
Thank you. I want to speak on, um, parents coming to lunch. Uh, the father who brought that up originally, he didn't have the opportunity to come and volunteer in your schools. He wanted to go to see his little child on his lunch break and he should have that opportunity. That is his child and he deserves to see his child when he wants to. It is not dictated by any of you when we can see our children or not. Right now, um, Title IX was talked about in the, uh, in the workshop before. And right now, a rape victim could be forced to go into school with, with their rapist. Like what happened last year at one of our Brevard junior, senior highs. Ms. Belford said, um, when they were talking on truancy, that they have to abide by state statutes. According to one of the other board members, they don't have to follow state statutes or the Board of Education, um, when it comes to having explicit material, uh, letting our kids basically have porn in their libraries. That's fine. Or having safe bathrooms and locker rooms and protecting girls' sports. We, we warned that there would be a Loudoun County situation because of these dangerous guidelines. An incident did happen over the summer in a restroom at BPS. Coincidentally, at the same school that a teacher was caught by students looking at pornography during class, the kids took a picture of it and sent it out on Snapchat. We have major problems. We need you guys to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Fred Kilgallen?
Amazing. Finally. My name is Fred Kilgallen and thank you for letting me speak. First, we're starting back to school during a surge in the virus because, of course we are, because Florida, hey? Also because Florida, we can't make mask wearing or distancing or basically anything that might mitigate the spread of the virus a requirement. So I'm asking you, and by you, I mean everyone that can hear the sound of my voice, to at least ask students and teachers to mask and take what precautions they can to stop the spread of COVID. Hey, I get it. We're over it. Unfortunately, just because we're over it, doesn't mean that people have magically stopped dying from this. A friend of mine nearly died last week in Kentucky. It's still out there. I'm not going to explain why mitigation needs to be done, but I do promise to come back and say, I warned you about this if the cases rise and people die. Spare all of us my return to say, I told you so, I beg you. Second, while the Second Amendment people are fainting from pleasure right now at our sheriff's announcement regarding the deploying of military-style weapons on campus, oh my God, I ask you all to work harder to strengthen teacher-student relationships so that when students detect that one of their own, and it's 99.99% one of their own, is about to explode when violence, they'll actually think it's a good idea to tell a teacher or a staff member before it happens. And thus prevent the act from occurring in the first place. Good teacher-student relationships is hands down the best chance any school has of preventing the worst. It's not mentally ill people who shoot up schools. It's angry, wounded, ignored, and abused young boys and men who do it. Imagine if they had a counselor, a therapist, or a trusted teacher they could talk to right on campus before they erupt. Let's put that system in place and reinforce it. Because if the sheriff ever needs to implement his system, it's too late. We lost.
Thank you, Fred. Audience, hold your applause, please. As Carrie's approaching, our next three speakers will be Rochelle Jolly, Jabari Hozie, and then Michelle Barano. Carrie, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, board. Um, I wanted to start by thanking you for the clarifications that you made on the misconceptions about HB 1647 regarding our classroom libraries and our book fairs. I appreciate the way that you have stated it in multiple meetings. It's too bad that more people aren't watching your meetings to get this communication. I also really appreciated the way that Dr. Mullins included in his presentation, the portion about safety and security. As a former teacher who went through all of those classroom trainees when the catastrophe happened in Texas in the spring, it certainly made me reflect on how safe I felt as a teacher in this community and I hope that helps parents out there understand that we are prepared as best as you can be in the face of that type of emergency. I also really enjoyed in listening to your banters tonight, um, the very good idea that came up about the possibility of an organized effort of parental parent volunteers helping our media specialists. And I think that would definitely be an area where all parents should look at their own schedule and say, how can I get involved and be out there? So the conversations tonight have been difficult, but there's been a lot of progress and I appreciate that. Thank you, board.
Thanks, Carrie. Rochelle?
I just want to thank the board for letting me come up and speak tonight. I've not done this before. A couple of things I want to say. I do think that that's a great idea for parents to come into the media center, be able to help out the media specialists. Um, and I'm sure that there are a lot of people in this room who are available to do that, but we have a lot of parents in this community who work two or three jobs, who don't have an opportunity to go in and help in their child's school. So I know of no other profession that depends on the public to come in and help them do their job. Um, I'm a Brevard County resident. Some of my children have come to me through childbirth and some of them have come to me because their parents can, are not able to take care of them. All of my children have attended Brevard Public Schools. I have a really good idea about how we might be able to retain our teachers and maybe even gain some. Um, I have served as a room mom. I've chaperoned field trips. I've been a high school cheer mom and have served on a school advisory committee. I've volunteered at my children's school that they don't even attend because there are schools that don't have parents who are able to volunteer at those schools. And I have friends who are teachers there who needed help in their classrooms or help on their field trip. Through these experiences, I have witnessed the incredible job that our teachers do every day. Teachers have positively influenced my own life and I'm sure there are many people in this room who can name a teacher that they love. Um, I have seen teachers navigate friendships and help children learn to be good citizens. I've seen teachers comfort a child who, um, had an older brother who was gunned down the night before and was at school the next day. So while some of us are able to go and volunteer in these classrooms because we've been very fortunate, there are a lot of parents who are not. Um, we need to be respecting our teachers. Um, if we're able to help our children achieve their potential, we must start respecting our teachers.
Thank you, Rochelle. We appreciate you joining us. Jabari?
Hi, I'm Jabari Hozie, president of Families for Safe Schools. So many topics to talk about, I'm going to pick a couple here. So, um, I'm here to thank Dr. Mullins and the majority of the school board for protecting So I'm here to thank Dr. Mullins and the majority of the school board for protecting all of our students and ensuring that our student guidelines go unchanged after the Department of Education has requested you follow the state's own interpretation of federal law. Title IX is a federal law. It's been around for more than 50 years. It prohibits sex-based discrimination in educational institutions. The protections were expanded to cover sexual characteristics, stereotypes, pregnancy, orientation, gender identity. The governor and the Department of Education have a problem with the latter two and are willing to openly tell our public institutions to ignore this expansion. I'm happy the majority of the board is in favor of following the law and guidance of the federal government and not the state acting as an authoritarian when deciding which laws we can and cannot follow based on their agenda. I know one of the school board members in particular here has a mission since this expansion started to remove that language of protection from our students and staff from discrimination. But saying that she is okay with openly discriminating is a slippery slope that we've seen play out in generations and decades in the past, also highlighting why we must teach accurate history in our classrooms, so we don't repeat those things. To the rest of the board, again, thank you for protecting our children, our teachers, our staff as much as you can during this turbulent time as we start a new school year tomorrow. Didn't have a place for this, but I had to add, after seeing the sheriff's video, the militarization of the BCSROs, brandishing assault rifles, is not a solution. That is not what we want our children to see and feel when they're in the classrooms, and we have to find a better solution going forward. We need to have a reworking of a contract or some sort of discussion when it comes to having assault rifles strapped onto our resource officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jabari. As Michelle is approaching, our next three speakers will be T. Owens, Danielle McDonough, and Wyatt Sumbo. Whenever you're ready, Michelle.
Hello, thank you. And I would especially like to thank all the teachers out there who are getting ready to start a new year under attack in a way that they never have been before and never should be. Know that the majority of the parents of public school students respect you and appreciate the work that you do, and I ask you to hang in there. Hopefully, it's going to get better. As a member of Families for Safe Schools and as a parent of a Brevard County student, I appreciate the commitment this district has made towards school safety. I fully support the hardening of the schools. Dr. Mullins, that you showed us on that presentation, the fencing, the cameras, the intercoms. Hardening the front offices, for sure, that needs to be done. Training and most especially increased communication are wonderful, and those are the correct answer for protecting our students. They are effective and they don't increase the risks inside the schools. The sheriff's plan, based on the video he released today, is to harden the schools by more aggressive, visible tactical weapons on our school resource officers. Having this strapped onto a SRO on our student's school is not the answer for those of you who can't see it over there. The intent, he says, is to save time in the event of an active shooter. What it will do is create a prison or war-like environment in our schools. Nobody feels safer when they see this. They feel like they're in imminent danger. This actually makes our students less safe. The risk of a shooting in school is one in 612 million, which is still too high. There should be zero. Just for comparison, your odds of winning the Powerball are one in 302 million. So you are twice as likely... You are twice less likely to be shot in school than to win the Powerball. The odds of an accident with a gun like this in the school, one in 8,349. Let's not make the cure worse than the disease.
We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you.
T. Owens. Audience, hold your applause, please.
Good afternoon or good evening. I'm T. Owens, and basically I want to speak regarding the book banning and also LGBT rights. So as books are banned and words can't be used, there are so many other issues to fight about, which actually help the children. One being reading. Most importantly, the reading levels reported of black students and students of all races and disadvantaged communities have went down. Have you really considered the mental health issues of those LGBT students and teachers? Have you considered how minorities feel about banning books that depict pictures of black children? How can you cancel history? Our history, you can't. Racism and homophobia are real and ever-present in Florida, especially in Brevard County. So for all those teachers and students that can't say it, I'm proud to be gay. Gay, gay, gay.
Audience, hold your applause, please. Danielle McDonough.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hold on one second, Danielle. Let me... Okay. Now, when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Dr. McDonough. I am a BPS parent. This is my 13th year. I am a BPS volunteer. That doesn't mean I go on school field trips. It actually means, in addition to working full-time, even when I was a grad student, I was at the school. My first volunteer opportunity was in the media center. So, you know, there's always been opportunity for parent engagement at the school as long as you seek it out. I really came here tonight because I went to my students' meet-the-teacher last week, and I walked in that school for the 13th year in a row, and I felt this warm, welcoming community full of wonderful staff that were there, happy, and welcoming to the students regardless of the stress that they have been under in this pre-planning. And I just can't say enough about our teachers and our community. Brevard County is a top-rated school district in the state of Florida, and it's so disappointing to come here, week after week, and listen to these board meetings where people sit here and say that teachers are abusive, students are abusive, bad things are happening in our schools. Guess what? Our students are going to Ivy League schools. Our students are top athletes. Our students are top performers. They're that because they have dedicated teachers who are there for them every day, and we need to support them. Another important topic to me is books need to be available to the kids. My kids are readers. My kids have never brought home a book that has caused them distress. They read anything and everything that they want. Our classroom libraries are suffering right now. I know that you think that they're not, but they are. We need to make the opportunities for us to opt in to scholastic book fairs, to the media center, to classroom libraries. Don't punish us because a few people don't want books.
Thank you. Wyatt, and as Wyatt is approaching, our last speaker will be Julia Anton.
Good evening, board. So one thing I want to touch on was the media center or library employee, probably some out here. This weekend, I was at a birthday party with my son, and one of the people there was a media center person. And in our discussion, they referenced that they are not a part of the performance bonus that teachers get. And this person is not Ms. Kludzik, but Ms. Kludzik at my kid's school is a phenomenal librarian. She goes above and beyond all the time. I mean, she's the kind of person you want every school. And I know she works as hard, if not harder, than teachers do. So if that is a fact, that they are not a part of a performance-based bonus or annual or whatever you all call it, I would challenge you to work that out with the gentleman in the back that was up here earlier. That said, I agree with volunteers in the schools, and I believe that the volunteer credit that we did last year, did that expire where you didn't have to pay for fingerprints? So volunteers are still good to go. That leads to my solution, which is eating with your children is important. And I think we all agree parental involvement in schools is very important. So with an approved volunteer status, why couldn't you go in? That would handle the security concern. Closing it out, I'm going to say that, back to the discussion on coaches. When you look at our mission to serve every student with excellence, why are we not picking the better coach regardless of who they work for? That makes no sense to me. We shouldn't be giving preference to teachers if the other person is better but doesn't work for the school. That's the problem I have with unions. Thank you.
Thanks, Wyatt. All right, Julia.
Okay, so I'm at the store, and I make my purchase, and the cashier has no idea how to count the change. I think to myself, this is why public education is so important. We should be able to go to the store, buy what we buy, pay for our stuff, and get our change back by somebody who knows how to do it. Public education is good for the community. It's to graduate an educated workforce that knows how to analyze contracts, execute building plans, create and enforce fire codes, fix broken computers, staff aircraft control towers, practice medicine, operate forklifts, take inventory, negotiate real estate deals, analyze business processes, write novels, instruction manuals, pilot airplanes, and oh yeah, go to the moon. And that's why the community funds public education. Public education is not some taxpayer-funded babysitting for parental convenience. All of the community is the school system's customers, not just the parents, not just the kids, all of the community. We, the community, deserve a system to meet the community's needs by serving every student with excellence as the standard. That includes gay students, trans students, straight students who say gay. That includes students who read Huck Finn, Killa Mockingbird, or The Outsiders, students with non-traditional family structures, students who are Hindu, Sikh, Buddhist, agnostic, Jewish, Muslim, atheist. It includes students belonging to demographics historically mistreated, lynched, or enslaved, who have just as much right to hear about their own ancestors' history as to learn about Robert E. Lee. Every student means every student. The community's agenda is not culture wars, not removing books from the library or classroom, not falsely accusing teachers of being pedophiles or groomers. The community's agenda is to support our teachers and staff. The community agenda is the customer. The community is the customer. Its agenda is education.
Thank you, Julia. We appreciate you joining us this evening. Audience, please hold your applause. All right. That concludes this evening's speakers. The board wishes to thank you for joining us this evening. Anyone have anything for the good of the order?
Can we just... Ms. D., I just want to clarify one thing that was said by one of the speakers, if you don't mind, just something super simple. One of the speakers brought up teacher bonuses, and I just want to clarify that just because I understand why that would be a concern if you heard that. So what you were talking about or what was told to you was an old bonus from the state. And that was true. We had nothing to do with that. That was not under our control. But the bonuses that BPS has administered has gone to all of our teachers and our media specialists. So they are correct in what they said, but that had nothing to do with BPS, and that's old. They don't even have that anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anyone else? I'm hearing nothing further. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.